Good morning. Welcome to the Clickat County Commissioners Workshop. All three commissioners are present and we're coming out of recess from Tuesday. Thank you. Anything else? Okay, so we have Jen Neal from Fiscal Services to help us through our budget. Jen's just almost ready. We're almost ready to start. So we really don't have. Pretty quiet. And our auditor and human resources.
Good morning. Um, so I just want to start this morning off with um kind of a calendar reminder. I know we've talked about the budget calendar a few times over the course of the year and in the prior years, but we are, we're starting this later than what we normally, I've normally started um this budget process um since being in this position. Um. So I just want to make sure that everybody is clear on calendar dates and, and the options that we have going forward. Um. October 7th is the statutory um public hearing, final public hearing for the budget. Uh, that's when the commissioners are to distribute the, the preliminary budgets to the public. Uh, when we have a public hearing for the budget, it can remain open for five days. So um, that would be five business days, remain open um to allow for public comment to continue on so that the board can either choose to make adjustments or not uh dur- after that public hearing is closed. Upon conclusion of the public hearing, the Board of County Commissioners shall fix and determine each item in the budget separately according to RCW and then shall pass a resolution to adopt the budget. Uh, mid-October, the assessor provides um levy certification packets to all taxing districts uh and the tax, and the taxes are to be levied and um. We have to return the certifications to the assessors no later than December 15th. As an option, we can follow an alternate budget hearing date by statute. That's December 2nd. So again, same concept as the first budget hearing date can be left open for, the hearing can be left open for five days to continue to accept comment. Um, and I should note that statute does say that within that comment period, the public can ask questions directly to directors who are managing those budgets as well. Uh, so it's always good to make sure that directors are aware and are available during those public hearing times. Yeah, I just can't find the button. Let me get some the other side. So those, those dates right there are the statutory hard deadline date. Yeah, it's on this one. It's a new monitor, so I don't know where the actual power button is. But um those dates are definitely statutory deadline dates that we need to keep in mind. And if the board would like to adopt the alternate date to have the hearing on the first Monday of December, December 2nd, um, I would advise that. Oh, there it is. I would advise that um the board go ahead and um allow me to allow me to draft a resolution to go ahead and do that and have it before the board before, on next Tuesday.
Our choices are early October, early December.
October 7th or December 2nd?
With the fact that we're running a little late, is it staff recommendation to do October or December?
December to provide a little bit more breathing room for the board.
Because we likely won't be through the whole thing by October.
And, and to keep in mind that we choose December 2nd, we have to be ready to publish to the public by November 7th. That would be our last workshop date. I have to, I have to post notice and have it published or on behalf of the board for two weeks.
I would appreciate the time since we're running late and just, just kind of starting. Um, I would appreciate the time.
I'm for the later one. I've always been for the later one. Didn't like the early one. Still don't like the early.
I'm good with the later one. Staff recommendation.
All right. Then I will draft a resolution for the board for next Tuesday for that. Thank you. I don't believe, I, I don't believe that I have to, but I think it's just best that way.
Any, I think later allows us to have more defined numbers potentially. And so I guess my point is whatever, if we were updating numbers for any revenues or whatever, you're saying our last chance to do those would be the first part of November before we publish it, correct?
We, we would definitely want to publish as close to complete as possible um at that point. And since we're going ahead and allowing that much time now, we can publish, we can hold a hearing and we can continue to work and reduce that budget. But what we cannot do is increase expenditure after, after a public hearing.
Oh, I have no intentions of increasing expenditures.
I, I'm just clarifying. I know. But sometimes, sometimes something, you know, a program gets, wants to be funded in one fund. And so something is taken from another fund, and this is just a blanket example. So the overall expense budget might remain the same, but a special revenue funds expense might go up and that could cause us issues with that.
Do you need to vote on that or do you get consensus?
I, I just needed consensus and I'll put it on the consent agenda for tomorrow, for Tuesday.
I just know some of our meetings as we talk can get kind of muddy. Muddy, and I don't know that the people sitting at that desk really know if the answer is yes or no. So I would like to go through this budget um with clear and defined by all three commissioners. It's on, I just can't get it that much closer. Um, let's see their opinion on each vote, so.
Oh, it is Thursday, isn't it? I, I'm sure it could be the Tuesday after. It'll be fine, just so long as it's accomplished before October 7th. And if I can access Zoom here. Screen share. Okay, so. On September 3rd, I presented to the preliminary budgets to the board um and the board had directed that we start in pieces, um, starting with revenue. Um, the evening of September 9th, you received a packet from me via email outlining the following, the methodology, excuse me, used for revenue projections, national and state economic outlook, an explanation of the following major revenue sources, property tax, sales tax, landfill, interest earnings, supporting data for each major, major revenue source, fund balance and anticipated fund balances, original office and department submissions, as well as working notes and comments. Um, those notes consisted of um conversations between directors or other electeds and myself, information regarding statute on certain items or revenue options available to Clickat County that we don't currently utilize. In that email, I also highlighted that um if there was a blue box around anything within that packet, that was a hyperlink uh for additional resources for you. So there was um resources to MRSC's Revenue Guide. MRSC also puts out a, an economic in projection of certain state shared funds as well as projections of um population growth in each county for the state of Washington as well as cities. A lot of great information in those that, that could and do assist us in projecting and forecasting those state entitlements um motor vehicle tax, marijuana tax, liquor taxes, those types of things. The packet I've provided serves solely as an informational resource to assist you in making the necessary decisions for this budget. My intent is to make this process smoother and more manageable for you. In previous years, I've worked at the board's um direction to, to guide the process, outline the plan for approaching the budget and workshops, and manage the scheduling of offices and departments for those workshops. Given the adjustments and the challenges that we have faced this year, I would like to ask for your guidance on how you would prefer to proceed after today.
Let's get through today.
Get through today. Uh, well, I think we need to set a schedule for sure. Uh, we have um agendas that we have to post, and I think the public would like to know which departments are coming in when so that if they want to be here for that department, they'll know when they're going to show up. So if we talk about those and talk it through of how we'd like to approach visiting with the departments, when they'll be coming in and put them on a schedule, that would help the public and that would help me looking ahead to my day, what I'm working on. Um, the executive summary, I'll probably have a lot of questions. Um, I started through it. And it gives me some rationale on your thought on how you approached the bottom line where you got to, but some of it for me, um, I have to backtrack and go back through the other documents and put historical numbers together in order to be able to do that math to come to your projection. So um, so it's great and it gives me your, your view, but I still uh have parts and pieces. So I'm thankful we're going to December for that timeline because that's going to give me the time to, to shift and ask question.
And the additional um the additional reports that I provided behind that executive summary is the data that supports that executive summary. Um, and again, that's, that's just the board's, the board's finance manager providing um a methodology and information to assist you to make the decision.
Well, and we'll work through that because I had one example today of landfill gas and I'd looked at it and then I had to go back quick this morning to look at some things and my tab was gone off the page. So I showed you both documents and we couldn't find the Kianta printout or the um in the executive summer where it's referenced to. So, so we'll work some, and wherever I find those, I can't find them, I'll flag them.
That's perfect. And the, and I just want to clarify, because I wasn't sure what you were talking about earlier, but now you've highlighted and made it clear. Landfill gas is not a part of the executive summary.
Right, I see that. It's not in there.
No, because it's not a, it's not a major revenue.
And over here, there's no numbers with it. It's just your summary of landfill gas fund. And then there's no summary behind it. There's no Kianta page. There's nothing with it for numbers for me to just take a look at something.
Let me talk about it when we get there.
Sure. But I'll flag them all where I have questions. Perfect. So I'm glad to have the time. Um, but yeah, I think we do need to talk about schedule. Um, so we can have, you know, these coming weeks, what are we doing so that the public knows and the departments know?
So I thought the, the discussion we had a week ago was, let's start with the ones that don't take a lot of general fund dollars and get those out of the way. So that would be like road fund and um senior services and um public health. And we kind of start with those. Is that, and then that'll give us more time to work on the revenues and then also go through it line by line on the expenses on the ones that we really want to bring in because I know prior to last year, we only brought the ones that we had issues with. And Commissioner Christopher went through and put all of his tabs in, and those are the ones that we want to have the conversations about, right? And so there's probably some that are pretty simple that we don't need a whole lot of conversation. So setting those timeframes. Sorry. So setting those timeframes.
Well, for me, I would like to have our first conversations about revenue and the questions we have about um the actual numbers. I want to know our actual number before I try to spend money. I want to know what our revenues are in, on solid ground and then go ahead and, and manage them out.
And I think our hope today is if we can
get through that.
Some of the big letters on revenues, so, or you can pull them, so you'll be able to get through that today or a lot of.
Which would be good.
That was the goal of today, right?
Mr. Christopher, do you have any thoughts?
Well, it was my understanding that we were doing revenue today, so I would certainly hope we would do it. And I certainly hope that we have three hours to do it. Um, technically it can probably get done in 20 minutes. I would imagine we would have revenues figured out today. Um, I, I agree with Jake. There are some budgets that unless we're going to demand a 10% across the board cut or something like that, that, that wouldn't really pertain to bringing in here. The courts for one. Um, they're, they're so razor thin that if you look at their budget forecast, they ask for an additional $3,000 kind of thing for training or something. I mean, there's really nothing there there unless you're forecasting uh org chart boxes. So I, I don't think that it's needed to schedule everybody. But to me, the way we've kind of done it before is logical, which is going over revenues. And then we, as a board, go through the book, um, share our information, um, highlight things of interest and then schedule any of those uh parties that want to come in to explain their interest. I think, I understand that's what Jake's asking for. Um, but for the most part, just getting through today and then at the end of today, deciding where we want to go from here. And I agree with that. I don't want to make a decision now that I can make in three hours because I might know something different in three hours.
Let's dive in then.
Yep, dive into revenues and then go ahead. After you have more time to look at the book and flag things, set a schedule, maybe next week?
I, I've looked through the book. I've read the whole thing. I've highlighted what I need to do. I've done my homework. Um.
Are you ready to set a schedule for people coming in is what I'm asking. Do you want to wait till next week to do that?
I would like to go through the book with the board and see what issues the board has with different departments and or things and then set a schedule. That might be in two and a half hours.
Okay.
Um, it might not be. I don't feel the need to have a conversation with a department that I have no need to have a conversation with because I feel we're just wasting time at that point.
Let's get through revenue then. Okay.
Alrighty, so as highlighted in the executive summary, uh, the way that I approach forecasting revenues for the county is a, is a dual method um approach. Judgmental forecasting, um. I find this approach crucial in post-COVID world. Where economic conditions still remain unpredictable. So to summarize, judgmental forecasting relies on expert opinions, intuition, subject assessments, incorporating non-quantitative factors such as political, social and economic insights and applying that methodology to also the historical trends that we, that we have. So historical trend analysis would be taking the historical actual data and then finding those common denominators and applying that trend out. So that's the methodology and approach that I take with Clickat County.
There was one factor that you forgot. Guessing.
Yes, keep in mind, keep in mind that
All forecasters.
All, all forecasts, all forecasting projections, budget. It's an educated guess, an educated estimate. We take, we do the best that we can with the information and the data that we have to provide and guide the board to assist to make decisions.
Right, but I guess the point I'm trying to make is three different people might have three different. And not saying that any one of the three are wrong. One of them's probably right. We just won't know until next year.
And that, and that's why the board hi- has somebody like, like me to go ahead and analyze that data and, and provide that for you, not, not to direct you what to do, not to tell you what to do, to just provide some more information outside of everybody else's approach. He did call me and asked me if I made it up and then he realized he Googled it and it was real.
Earnings, where do I find that in the big book?
Um. It's non-departmental, I believe.
I was gonna say, I don't remember. Okay, continue on.
Uh, the executive summary, I provided some national and state economic outlook. Um, what economic uh analysis experts are seeing out there in the world today. Um, I am not an economist, uh, so I rely on the other experts to guide me through that. So revenue projections, um, property tax. With a projected 1% levy increase, um, it's expected to contribute approximately $55,000 of increased revenue um to the property taxes. And I worked with um Assessor Bear and Treasurer Gallagher on the property tax projections. Um, Assessor Bear was able to provide me an, an estimation of new construction, which was, which is expected to contribute an additional $55,000.
Very much, you know.
Put my mic back on. I turned it off because I don't want to bump it constantly and make noises. I very much appreciate the historical trend of new construction in here, along with the Lund Hill project from 2023. It uh is when I was coming up with these numbers last year, I was having to kind of do them on my own because we didn't really have any and it, it came out right about where I expected. And I think these are good numbers for future board staff.
Yes, uh, Assessor Bear was wonderful to work with um and happy to take that team approach and I appreciate that so much. Sales tax, um, Clickat County sales tax revenue historically, sales tax historically for counties in the state of Washington is the second largest source of revenue. Um, what I see projected is a 1% increase to sales tax, however, due to fluctuations in unemployment, a more conservative project, projection of less than 4.2 is what I would recommend to the board. The board, of course, can do whatever the board chooses to do. Um.
I just for clarification for the public that heard about it, a 1% increase in sales tax, uh, I would like to add the word revenue to that and not that we're increasing your sales tax by 1%.
I apologize.
And during your last quarterly update, didn't you say sales tax revenues were trending down plus to 9%?
Yes, yes. And I'm taking the 1% increase over what we're going to see this year due to the potential Fed rate reductions. Uh, potentially with a growth in uh consumer confidence from economic analysis outside of.
So you're anticipating the continued downward trend of eight or 9%, but then you're going to add 1% to that bottom line of what your estimate is?
At this point, because I've not done the third quarter financial analysis.
What are you seeing for um projected interest rate cuts? So I can tell what your methodology is compared to mine. Are you projecting a quarter uh this year and then two one-quarter cuts next year or what are you projecting?
That's on the next page, Dan.
I'm ahead of myself then.
You are. I can jump forward. It's fine.
Um, I think what would probably work better and, and Dan's probably right, how fast we can get through this is, we talked about property tax. I think the simple answer is, is the board in agreement with yes, that's the right number that came from Greg and uh Jen or no? And if we get a yes, let's move on and let's lock that in. Let's not just go through the whole thing and then start over again. Would that work for my seatmates?
To some degree, yes. Um, I would say that I don't have a problem with that forecasted number. I do think it's a little bit on the conservative side, but I'm fine with a little bit on the conservative side. Some of these other things are way too far on the conservative side. That one I'm fine with, but I will say I'm not a yes on the 1% tax increase. Uh, we'll find that out as we go along and, and how the board handles the rest of the budget.
So what you're saying, so let's, let's get this very clear so that we don't come into the same situation we were in at the end of last year. What you're saying is, is that you're not in favor of taking the 1% uh tax increase.
Well, I prefer if you don't put words in my mouth.
No, that's why I'm asking.
What I'm in favor of is to see if this board is going to take the budget seriously and make the changes that needs to be made in the budget seriously before it taxes the people um more money. So if all the levers are pulled and we've done everything we can and there's just no way to avoid it, then I would be open to the conversation. Uh, if the board is still funding programs and services that it can't afford to fund, is afraid to make the hard decisions, wants to use, you know, a million and a half of reserves that, I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm gonna be a no. Um, if you can't balance your budget, you probably shouldn't be increasing your taxes. Um, that's where I'm at.
And what that says to me, Dan, is um if we can walk through these and agree or disagree at where we're at with these projections and get just a base rate to start with, then we could move through the budgets and if we agree, we can come back to those revenues and adjust some things later to help us.
Well, essentially, essentially all you're really talking about, since we don't have a Lund Hill going online this year, is you're dealing with essentially $50,000 in revenue for the general fund and $50,000 for the road fund. Now, question that I may get an answer to, can you take the new construction bump without taking the 1%? Question for later. We'll, we'll do some research. But my point is that is such a small revenue line that I don't want to say yes at the beginning of a budget because it ain't going to make or break a budget for a hundred grand. It just ain't. I mean, it's budget dust. So the fact that we would have to, nope, we're going to tax people before we even look at the budget, I find that a little excessive. I, I don't know why it can't be addressed at the very end uh to see whether you need that hundred grand.
If I can clarify a little bit on property tax and, and the 1% and the levy and what we can or cannot.
Hang on. Sorry for everybody online. I'll be standing through the day because I have a disc issue. So if you see me standing, I'm not throwing a tire rate or something.
So the county can opt to take less than 1%. Um, the county can only take 1% so long as the implicit price deflator um, it exceeds the 1%, which it's trending to do at this point in time. So 1% is the maximum, but we can always take less than that.
Just for clarity. I, I, I guess my point is I have no problem putting it in here just as a fineness in here, in address whether we want to take the hundred grand towards the end. That's all I'm asking for.
And I agree as a placeholder.
And if I can clarify one more thing in related to property tax, the only thing that would um halt us from being able to collect property taxes would not be certifying the levies on time.
What's the date on the certification I have it here?
No, later than December 15th.
Okay, that works.
We try to do it as early as possible so we don't run the risk because we would, that would be catastrophic.
I would, uh, I would say that the whole purpose of the 1% is so that you can try to keep up with inflation a little bit uh and your colas. And we know that our colas for just the whole purpose of the one percent is so that you can try to keep up with inflation a little bit, uh, and your colas, and we know that our colas for just our, um, represented employees is gonna be above the one percent. And yes, I'm in favor of baking it in with a conversation at the end, um, to wrap around before we get to the day of certifying the levy.
So we all agree.
I think so. I think that was a quite bake it in now and let's discuss it later.
Okay.
It's my belief that we shouldn't be starting at eight because our staff actually has to be prepared, and so now you're making them get here early. I would hope that we would start at eight fifteen or eight thirty, so they have time to show up at eight and still have the room ready, but that's just my personal take on employees.
Eight thirty work for you, Jake?
We have an eight oh five K L C K radio, so we're gonna be starting at eight, eight twenty-five or eight thirty anyways.
There you go.
Okay, so what do you wanna move to next?
Next on my list is sales tax.
Okay.
We're okay with moving on there. Um, so historical trend analysis of sales taxes challenging at best each month, um, and each year are dependent upon consumer confidence. Regardless, there is a trend when enough years are analyzed. So I've compiled data for every month going back to twenty ten. That's fourteen months of month-to-month data to identify the months that spike and the one, months that fall and, and develop a, a percentage of those um, increases and decreases. Let's prove it. This method has proved to get me relatively close at the end of the year, uh, for sales tax. Again, this is, sales tax is a volatile revenue, um, because it's depending on factors that we can't control. So I take the month-by-month actual numbers, remove the anomalies, so I'm just comparing apples to apples. And when I say the anomalies in sales tax, there's been legislative changes, so we have the airport, we used to have airport sales happen within our county. We would collect the sales tax for those sales. Um, legislative changes have, have happened that no longer happens. So removing those those sales from our sales tax numbers as well as, um, the sales tax increase that we had in twenty twenty-two, I believe, uh, and the months that those are different. So I do the work to remove the anomalies, so I'm comparing apples to apples to, to come up with a best guess forecast. Of the four point two million dollars in sales tax that's projected, three point six of it is specific to un- unrestricted use within a general fund. After discussions with Treasurer Gallagher, we felt better about budgeting this volatile revenue just under that projection at three point five. There are other portions of sales tax that are restricted to special revenue funds, uh, one twen- Fund one twenty-three Tourism Fund, um, one twenty-five's cumulative reserve, four point, point oh nine dollars, one thirty-three Affordable Housing, and one thirty-five Communications. These funds budget sales tax with my, without my assistance. The proposed budget in the Special Revenue Funds for Sales Tax is a subtotal of eight hundred sixty-five thousand dollars, combined total of proposed sales tax equalling four point three six five. A total of a hundred and sixty-four thousand under the one percent increase, but a hundred and twenty-eight thousand over the projection, taking into consideration unemployment.
So, again, we're currently trending down eight or nine percent on the year?
A quarter to is eight.
We're trending down eight percent. And so in order to get to your four point three, do you take that trend and continue it down and then add one percent to that?
Yes.
Do you know what the trend is in other counties?
I do not.
You have the spreadsheet in here that shows our sales tax revenue historically.
Uh, it's not in there, but I can pull it up if you'd like.
Please do.
Please.
I do know that Spokane has been all everything. Look, the city of Spokane.
Everybody's down.
Right, but I, I guess I would say that I believe a sales tax shortfall is, is based on recession or how much of a recession or how big of a recession and, and I, I'm using the term recession as in the people don't have money to buy things on Amazon. Uh, and, and I guess I'm not terribly worried about, um, a collapse of the sales tax until I think people aren't gonna be buying things on Amazon. And then if you could tell me what we projected sales tax to be for the twenty twenty-four year and what it actually is gonna finish, it would help me um, quantify how accurate our estimates have been in the past.
Okay. So this would be the month-by-month data going back to twenty ten. You could see the average increases and decreases are all over the board. Um, you usually see increases around some holiday times, and then Christmas, December time, you see a massive drop-off in sales. So what's projected would be taking the average increase between twenty-two and twenty-three's, um, anomalies removed each month. So the seventeen, the three, the fourteen, eight, eighteen, and the six coming down to four point five.
When did this sales tax rate increase actually go into effect?
We saw numbers change in June of twenty twenty-two.
The worst twenty twenty-three.
I have twenty-three over here.
It's four point five.
Now, keep in mind, that is sales tax as a whole, so all of those restricted revenues, point oh nine dollars, um, Affordable Housing, Tourism, those all are included in this number.
Are they not all included in your number over here that you're predicting three point five?
That, no, they're not. Four point two was including all of them. Or my suggestion of four point two included all of them, I.
Okay, so if we continue, oh, at today's month-to-month, where are we expected to end twenty twenty-four?
Four point five.
And that's with, and what did we have it budgeted at?
Four point four.
So we're actually going to be up for the year if we continue?
If it continues with these average, if it holds true to these percentage adjustments between there. Now, I
And you're.
I would, I prefer, because this is completely out of our, out of our control, I would advise that we, you know, be conservative with this number.
So your recommendation is to change, yes, we're gonna get technically four point five this year. You're saying next year, let's put it at four point two, four point.
At, at max.
Four point two, three, six, nine, four, zero.
At max.
Um. I will hold off my answer until I hear what my seatmates have to say.
And I say that, and, and I we have no idea what the Federal Reserve is gonna do. We don't know what un- unemployment is going to do, and both of those things will attribute to sales tax.
I, I, that I agree, but I, the reserve number far more than unemployment, because I don't know, maybe I just don't see unemployment becoming a problem, since all the baby boomers are retiring. I just, I just don't see that an issue in, in our budget forecasting future in at least the next five years.
I really hope you're right.
Um. I, I think our unemployment is gonna be based on more seasonal work and those workers that never want to work. Um, because anybody can find a job, can go find a job next month, as long as they're not, you know, somebody that chooses to make in tacos that applies to run the jail. Um, you know, if you, if you're actually are applying for something you're qualified for, I think you're hired in a week. Um, but anyway.
Clickitack County's, um, unemployment is heavily seasonal, as I'm sure all of you are aware, due to the agricultural work in the county.
I don't see it as steep as a cut. And I, I think I would like to look at reformulating that up a little, um. I'm not so worried about some of the indicators. Um, I mean, we're watching, we're watching the Fed, but I, I don't see it as steep as this.
So I guess my question would be, is if it's four point five this year and she's recommending to be conservative with four point two next year, what is your thought on what number you think it, it should be at?
So I guess from my personal opinion, when I'm looking at the January to June, we were down five percent. Um, and that's a trending down. My personal feeling is, is we should think about zero to, uh, about a four point four million. And that give us two hundred and fifty thousand, like, one hundred and fifty thousand extra to work with. It's still conservative. We can come back and change it if we need to make it up, and we can put a sticky note by it, but at least we have always been conservative in our estimates.
If I would like to add another bit of information, um, although this method has gotten me close to the number, we have yet actually come in hitting our budget number in sales tax. Just food for thought.
So clarification, Jake, uh, you said zero to four point four, I mean.
So zero would be a zero change from twenty twenty-four?
So either taking the four point five or going as low as four point four is what you're saying?
Yeah, but I would prefer four point four as a starting point with, with a sticky note in there that it's something we can review in the future, but I still think that we need to definitely be a little conservative. Four point four is not conservative enough in my, in my estimate, but it's based on what I'm hearing. I think that's a good happy middle ground.
Well, I, I guess I will. I will say that this county is very lucky that it has underforecasted revenues other than landfill four years ago. Um, because it does get a lot of supplemental budgets uh, in the board has historically not told people no. So if we start forecasting more accurately without underforecasting for safety reasons, whatever board is sitting here next year is going to have to start saying no. Um, because there won't be that fudge money, um, that was underforecasted to cover all those supplementals for everything everybody asked for, so uh, I'm personally fine with telling people no. Um, and I'm sure it'll hurt the first few people because they'll, but then everybody else will learn after that. Um. I guess I don't have a problem even going down to four point three. We're only really talking about two hundred grand. I do think sales tax could um, be a little lower. I, I don't know that it's gonna be four point two low, but I, I won't go four point five. I don't think that's smart. Uh, but I could easily do, um, four, three, I think four, four is a little on the high. But it, it's not illogical. Um, I can, I can totally see how it could be rational. So if the board did wanna go four, four even, I think it's high, but, but I could support it.
I can support four, four.
Well, we went from five million down to four hundred and four eight three five.
Thank you.
Sounds like four.
Four, four is what I heard.
Yes.
Also wanted to set it, so if everybody else is agreeing, I don't need to repeat it.
I said, I, I can see four, four coming true, but um, I, you know, in all reality, it's the same forecast that I mentioned earlier. Four, four might be right. My four, three might be right. We might both be wrong, and then it's four, seven. Um, it's.
I just did some research on Spokane County, and they're not expected to reach their twenty twenty-four sales tax goal until the end of twenty twenty-five, and that's because they budgeted two percent increase in twenty twenty-four. And instead, it was coming in at about one percent. And so when you look at those numbers, I think four point four is still conservative because it's still less than what we're expecting, so.
I don't disagree.
Yeah, I'm good. Okay. Moving on, uh, the next on my list would be the landfill revenue. And this one's, this one's tricky because we don't have a whole lot of data under the new contract. Um, so a a lot of best guess scenarios come into play, and I provided multiple scenarios for you. So, um, as, as we all, we all know, um, Republic Service lost a couple contracts, starting really in mid-quarter one, um. Landfill revenue has decreased in tons quarterly, um, of eighteen percent, on an average of eighteen percent so far in twenty twenty-four. It took a conservative approach with twenty twenty-five budget projection of seven point one five nine. Historically, Clickitack County is unlike, uh, most Washington State counties due to having the landfill and as a major revenue source. Uh, the county has been in business with the landfill, um, contractors. There's been a couple of them that have taken over since nineteen eighty-nine. With this revenue source, the county has been able to provide services to its constituents that other counties may not have been able to support. From nineteen eighty-nine to two, um, twenty twenty-three, the landfill has brought in two hundred and thirty-five million dollars. I provided, um, some charts for you to show what programs have been funded by the landfill dollars. Uh, the Board of County Commissioners at the origination of the landfill wanted to highlight to the citizens' tax relief that they were receiving by having the landfill within the county. With this revenue, the prior Board of County Commissioners were able to avoid tax increases imposed on the citizens to maintain the programs and services Clickitack County provides. Over the years, this tax relief to the citizens is a sum total of fifty-two million dollars. Forecast, uh, detail, I've, I, I have insight to three quarters in the tw- of revenue received in twenty twenty-four rather than what you see in the budget book that only pulls, um, two quarters. In order to more accurately project year-end twenty twenty-four and what is anticipated in twenty twenty-five, I'm using all three quarters of the data. There are a couple of factors. Quarter one did not reveal all the landfill contracts that were lost, revenue reduction and tonnage reduction. One would think revenue reduction and tonnage reduction would go hand in hand, but they do not due to special, um, special tons where where we provide Republic Service a hefty discount on the, on those tons. Typically, we'd get a little over four dollars a ton for, for waste, special, um, special waste tons. We get a little bit over a dollar. We give them a three dollar rate cut. The current revenue, revenue trend is showing an eight percent reduction for quarter four, resulting in a The current revenue revenue trend is showing an eight percent reduction for quarter four, resulting in a projecting projected Q four payment of. Just a little over two million dollars, finishing the year at a projected eight point six million dollars. This results in an overall projection for twenty twenty four to finish the year thirteen percent below twenty twenty three. Had Republic Services lost all contracts at the beginning of Q one, of course, the percentage would look a little bit different. Oh, that's my place. In order to project twenty twenty five with limited data under the new contract, there are a number of ways to go. Um, quarter two through quarter four, finding the reduction of revenue with all lost contracts in place. So the average reduction of twelve percent. Which with an anticipated total of seven point six million dollars. You could take Q one through Q three trending lost tonnage, so that av- average revenue reduction is eighteen percent a quarter, anticipating a total of seven point one percent. Or the Q two, Q three, actual lost tonnage is total lost tons of twenty seven percent with an anticipated total of six point three. Um. The average reduction per quarter is. Thirteen percent under that last scenario, anticipating a total of seven point five. Essentially, I'm giving you a range of seven point one to seven point six um of with that with that data, very limited data. Um. For this current year under that new contract. So I've included line charts with calculated trend and trend lines to support those projections. Um, I chose a polynomial trend line. With the order of a third, third degree due to the data points and the relationship between the variables no longer being linear, uh, meaning no longer the same. Um, lost contracts have definitely changed the dynamic of the operations of Republic Service and the. There is a linear. Trend line to identify the trend if no change was to happen. Um. As well as a moving average trend line. So if you take a look, maybe I can. Zoom this in.
But all we have to do. Is do what they did four years ago and forecast ten point five million dollars, and then our budget's balanced. We don't have to do anything else for the year. We could.
So.
That wasn't the first.
So this trend line right here, this is the moving average. You could see. It comes in a little bit higher, both come in a little higher than my very conservative approach. Um. And then the polynomial. Comes in a little bit higher than that moving average.
The only way to get to number significantly grow is new contracts, correct? I mean, they're bringing in more tonnage.
So. Yes, the number grows with CPI every year, and yes, the only way to. Tonnage. But new tonnage has been worked on for three years. Um. New tonnage is. Very close. Um. I don't want to bake. Potential new tonnage into this budget. But. I can tell you that within the next six months, there might be a few more trains showing up. Um. And rumor is. Within the next six months, we'll be getting a large chunk. Um. So. We'll see how that goes, but I don't want to bake it into the ledger.
And I don't know if I've mentioned to this to you individually or not, but I I've heard third hand that Island County. May not drop their contract. We, everybody was under the assumption that if Skagit County went, Island County would follow, and I. That's not the case yet. They just haven't.
Yeah, but Islands Islands kind of budget dust in this.
It's small, but still it's might stop the trend of.
I'm talking about Seattle.
Yeah, I've heard King County.
That's.
Yeah.
They got to do something with their trash, their landfill's filling up. They got to get something put somewhere. And doing a test run and I've I've actually heard the, and I haven't heard this from. The top people at Republic. I'm hearing this from the lower level people in Republic. So it's already traced trended down from the top to them. It's not just. Ear candy. Uh, from management of Republic. Uh, so in other words, I trust the source better. To get what I mean. Um. I don't think management is. Um, entirely filling the board in on. Their plans anymore. Um, so when they tell their employees what to plan for, I take that more. As. Potentially accurate. Than what any of us might hear. Um. So anyway. Let's all cross our fingers. We see some Seattle trash next year.
And I, you know, some things I've heard too. I I don't think it is, um. Blumenjum at Republic Services. I think they're a business that wants to survive like every business, and so they're working hard at. Uh, bringing their revenues in because they have to survive and they have to produce for the people that own them. Um, so. I have a lot more confidence in what's going to happen in the future and what I see coming from what I've heard. Um, and I I do think. This estimate is very, very conservative. And I think the numbers coming in the rest of this year and then into twenty twenty five will be higher than this. I think we have. Some room to move.
I absolutely, I hope you're are absolutely one hundred percent accurate and correct in that, um. I I I go off numbers so I can confidently. Um, present to the board, um, and. I don't, I don't have enough data to. To really uh feel comfortable with presenting to the board a less conservative number, so the board could choose to do whatever. If you have more, you probably have more insight than I do, um, and with your relationships with Republic Services, so.
Probably say yeah.
Yeah, I I just go off.
For clarification, you're saying this year. We're forecasting receiving eight point six, and next year your recommendation is conservative seven one.
Yes. With with the the different. The three different options of going up to seven point six depending on, but that's the data approach.
I will. Warn. Uh, or. Pass on information Commissioners or Mayor may or may not know. Uh, when Republic has a forecasted budgeted. Number. Their budget runs from June thirtieth to July first on our calendar, so take that into consideration.
I I wonder if it'd be helpful in future years if. If Jen and. The board chair. Could sit down with Republican, their finance people and their corporate people and, you know, all of Jen's numbers are regressive. They're all looking back. We don't know what. And they may not always tell us what they have coming like King County, and I've heard that from a state if it. That's a possibility. Um, but you know, if we if they could sit down prior to and say, hey. Um, just look conservative, not conservative, and you know, because they know what's coming. We know what's happened in the past, so but and I'm not sure we've ever really been able to sit down with Republic's. Finance folks and and Steve Gilmore and the team from Olympia Jeff, Steve's boss and and have these discussions with the Commissioners. And Jen going forward, so.
Well, I would say I'm a hundred percent opposed. Because I'm a hundred percent opposed to the chair having anything outside of this room that's run by the Board of Commissioners. I am a hundred percent in favor of them sitting down in front of all three Commissioners. And having discussion.
Wait, so you've had conversations with Republic and that's okay, but it's not okay for the board chair to have the conversations with Republic? And staff?
Hey, when did I have conversations with Republic? What's this? Let's get continue this allegation.
Well, you just said that you've been talking with Republic and you've been hearing this information and in that this is where this is information's coming from.
Uh, that's not what I said. I said I've been talking with low level like guys at the transfer station. That's not like Republic Management in finance. I'm I'm sorry.
Okay.
To to solve this, I I do think it's crucial that the finance person have access to their finance people. Um, we've got to meld it together somewhere, not have the maybe ifs.
That I have no problem.
Yeah.
It's just when the Commissioners get involved, I believe. It's supposed to be a board of three. I think all three should Commissioners should be involved in everything and not a king. That controls things behind the scenes. And and. At that. What? That is what is the potential? If it's only one Commissioner having meetings with any staff. Period, and it doesn't matter what Commissioner it is, this board, past boards, future boards. Um.
And because it's such a an important contract, I do feel Jen would see that as a really crucial relationship. In going forward in the future.
Absolutely, yeah.
So I think it would help a lot.
At the, because at this point, like Rob said, I can only see the trend that we have so far, the data that is provided, and their overall tonnage is going down. Their overall net tonnage is going down, overall tons is going down, but their special waste tons are going up. So of course, that that would imply they're just smart business people, right? They're taking care of themselves and making sure that they're hitting their revenue projections that they need.
Have you called them and seen if you can talk to the finance person and ask them what their forecasted budget? Uh, for our county going forward is?
I would never do that without this discussion with the board first. Absolutely not. That would be due to the relationship and that contract.
I am, I'm fine with authorizing Jen. Um, to to call them up and and have that discussion, see what their forecasted numbers are. Uh, for their next calendar year, which again falls. Wonky because it's mid year to mid year. Um.
And I I don't think their finance person would expose anything to you that would be inappropriate as far as they're concerned for their business dealings, but.
Yeah, I can imagine.
To money.
They they're going to have an estimate on how many tons. And they're going to have an estimate on the dollars and and I can almost assure you that they're far more knowledgeable. Figuring out the weird CPI inflator guru garbage jumbo that's in that contract than anybody in this room.
I believe it's seventy percent of CPI.
So, uh, yeah, but it's like four hundred words to get there.
It it is an algebraic equation to get there.
You have to. Like work the equation backwards to even figure it out.
Mm hmm.
Um, so I I. I do believe that our forecast should be somewhere. At least mirrored to theirs. Uh, and or at least in the ballpark.
Madam, Madam Chair, um, we used to have regular updates from Republic on a regular basis, and we also had a full time solid waste department, uh, director. Um, we don't have that right now. We have an interim. Uh, my request would be that we have our interim solid waste department director reach out to. Uh, Republic and see if they would want to come in and give us an update on the landfill, uh, with their uh estimated budget for calendar year twenty twenty four so that we can input that into our budget as appropriate.
If if that's so, well, the Commissioners happy to do that. Uh, remind the Commissioners that, uh, Republic has asked a number of times to be able to come on at least a quarterly basis, bring their team and update the Commissioners. We've done it once. I mean, you haven't told them no. I think we just need to get sit down with maybe Steve and. And Art or Jeff and and get them on the calendar for a year and, you know, um, but they'd like to do that. They they called me and said they want to get back into regular rep. You're talking about a a sooner than that, but.
I think we should do it quarterly, but I also think that whatever that quarter is before the budget, they need to bring the finance people and give us estimate on what they foresee with tonnage and what their future.
We can do that going forward. You're talking about you want a meeting as soon as we can get them down.
I either, so either they can come in and have a conversation, or if they can give us an estimate of twenty twenty five tons and revenues. Based on the CPI number that just came out and everything else, um, then we can, we can then take that number, add it to Jen's number, and we can find a responsible conservative number.
Um. Yeah, just I I would ask them, but but to make sure you remind them our calendar year is different than theirs, we're going to get a different number.
I'll do that today.
Okay, thank you.
And with that, we can leave this discussion off.
Yeah, I can head this discussion off, but I can tell you that I'm. I'm like the hell no at the seven point one. Uh, because I actually think the number will be pushing about nine million next year. Um. And that's without. Seattle. Um, so if I had to guess today, I would be more likely to be at eight point seven, eight point eight. That's just my numbers now.
I missed the first number you. You guessed that it would be.
Oh, I that's I wouldn't do the seven point one. I actually think we're going to be closer to. Eight point nine or nine million next year. Um, so I I would, if I was having to set the number today off the information I have in my head. Um. I would probably be setting a budget at eight, six, eight, seven. Knowing that's conservative by a couple, two, three hundred grand. Thinking that's conservative by two or three hundred grand in my own head anyway.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I was just taking, I'm taking notes so that I can go back into this later.
Do you want to wait for any comments?
Yeah, I want the information before I make.
That's great. And I have, I have some numbers in my head, but I'll wait for the comments too.
Okay.
So again, we, you're okay with them either providing the numbers, having a meeting with Jen and providing her the information and or them zooming in on a Tuesday or Thursday. Joining us however, whatever it takes to get the information, you're okay.
It would be nice if they could do it in front of us so that if a Commissioner has a question, hey, you know, what do you expect in future? Contracts, hey, what contracts are for negotiation in the next two years? Any weird questions, they'd be able to answer it. By being here or on Zoom.
And if they could.
But worst case scenario, just have the conversation with Jen and and let's get this thing moving.
If they could possibly next Tuesday, that'd be awesome.
Okay.
Then we can be done with this, this discussion.
Jake. Thanks, girl.
Yeah, let's continue the conversation when we get them in. If they want to send us a number later this week, because they probably already should have it, that we could then come back for a discussion, at least, you know, next Thursday during our budget would be nice.
And and I know they're aware of the number, so I. But we can. Okay, fairly quickly. On to interest.
Interest. So the big unknown, um, the county has benefited from the high interest rates on the post COVID world. But future earnings are uncertain due to the potential Federal Reserve rate cuts. Conservative interest earnings projection of nine hundred and seventy seven thousand overall. Uh, for twenty twenty five has been recommended. Uh, the Federal Open Market Committee raised interest rates to five point two, five to five, five at the July twenty. Twenty three meeting, uh, marking eleven rate hikes in a cycle aimed at curbing inflation. Uh, those, those rates have held steady for about a year. In June twenty twenty four, the Fed signaled that the rates could begin to decline in the future. Now, we will know more about that, um, what they're going to do September seventeenth and eighteenth when they meet again, um, so I'll definitely be keeping an eye on that. Um. But. There's been talk, there's word out there, speculation among experts that the. That there's a likelihood of a cut between twenty five and fifty basis points. Assuming the same level of cash continues to be invested, twenty five basis point reduction per quarter is approximately about twenty percent of a um reduction of interest earnings. Projecting one point nine million dollars.
Per quarter, which is how many quarters? Are you, are you saying twenty five basis points for?
If they continued to.
The quarter of this year plus all four quarters of next.
Four quarters of next year, yes.
So you're predicting five, five cuts.
Think of this year.
One for this year and four for next year. Is that what this number is baked on?
Let me go check my notes.
So I'm predicting three.
I. Now, I believe I'm just doing twenty five basis points. Per quarter for twenty twenty five. Not for the twenty twenty four year. Um, but I did this so long ago that I have to go try and find that. Number just.
Right, but I guess my question is, is. Are are you anticipating the Fed just cutting? One interest cut of twenty five basis points. And then. That's it. And then the total for the damage of that one interest cut is this number, or are you predicting twenty five basis points every time they meet every quarter?
That would be twenty five basis points per quarter reduction.
That's sort of, so the to, but did you figure in a reduction this year?
I'm looking. I believe it's a no, but I'm looking.
Because that would put our numbers closer because I have three, and if you only had four and not five, it kind of puts our numbers closer, so that's what I'm trying to. I have one this year and two next year in my. Forecast. And then while you're looking, you may be able to answer this. The treasurer's sitting in the back. He can volunteer if he wants. Looking at the. Uh, treasurer's big book. It has, that we forecasted this year at eight hundred thousand. Really, I'm meaning I had nod, yes. Prior year actual was two point three nine million. Um, current year actual year to date is one point eight seven. Is that? Still accurate, close enough numbers? And then do we have a guest estimated finish? For the year?
How cloudy is your crystal ball?
Right, right. Magic eight ball. I get it.
Just because I have some thoughts on this. I thought it would be good to come forward. Uh. I think we can all speculate on the, how many pieces and parts. And I mean, I think this is a volatile number. I think we all realize that. I would caution that in the past. Um, for example, last year we budgeted eight hundred thousand and we knew that that number was light, but we also knew. That with the actuals that we were above that, we could use that money for supplementals that we then were like, we were funding our supplemental. Um, budgets with actual known increases. Um, so I think it's difficult. I also think that we have a presidential election coming up. I think we have a lot of different parts. Um, I, I think, you know. Jen and I talked about it. I feel pretty comfortable with the million. I mean, I, I, I think it's going to be higher, but. I caution us in trying to use the revenue of investment interest. To fund fixed revenue or fixed expense type situations. It's like living on your commission almost. Because I think we all will agree that eventually it's not going to go back to what it was in fifteen where it was twenty basis points. I, I don't, well. That's my crystal ball. Okay, we're all cloudy, but I don't think it's going to go that far back, but I do think it's going to ratchet. And I do think that as it goes down, we will see that. So, I mean, the number is definitely. I, I think your comments on your pieces valid, and I, I think it's just. Of all the things, there's so much speculation on this specific item.
Well, as I said, we're all valid.
Yeah, no.
One of us is gonna be right at the end of the year.
None of us will be right. Right, that's the thing. We'll call, we'll.
Do we have an estimated year-end total for this year?
I, I don't.
I have it. Um, if, if we go off of. So to answer your question originally, I did not use a reduction. For the year end of twenty twenty-four. So I took, we're receiving exactly what we're receiving now. Um, we should finish the year at two point seven. Without any rate reductions. Um.
So much better. On my knees, my back can be straight. So you're forecasting two point seven finish? That helps.
I think a better way to look at it though. I think a better way to look at this is.
It's falling up.
We look at what the Fed, uh, Fed's goal is. The Fed's goal is about three point two five, I think. Um, what I'm reading right now is that, uh, we're at a very likely for twenty-five basis points to September. As well as three more rate cuts this year before we even begin in on year twenty-five.
What?
This is what Reuters is saying right here, came out.
A cut in September plus three more by the end of the calendar.
Three totals, so three total, two more.
Three total by the end of this calendar.
By the end of the calendar, end of year. Uh. The likelihood of, uh, one hundred basis points cut. Um, that's what the markets are pricing in. So the markets are pricing in a hundred basis point rate cut by the end of the year.
Now.
The markets are also pricing in that we're going to war by the end of the year, so.
So just to add in a couple extra points in regards to the two point seven, um, that does not take into account any. A couple of things. That were, were showing in these numbers and that I found out after the fact, um, you know, there was, there was cash. That wasn't being invested in other funds, so it was going into this general pool and, and that attributes to that, but it's now been invested in its own special revenue fund. And some, a couple million dollars has been pulled out of, of interest to fund what I'm assuming is projects as well. So. Again, this is an up and down and it's shake, shake a crystal ball.
But I think a, a better way that we can do it is we, rather than picking a number, we pick a federal funds rate and then. Then we can work our way through that being a little conservative. So if the goal of federal funds is to get to about three point two or three. Uh, and that's their goal, whether it happens quick or long. Um, but if we set that, we're still being a little conservative, but at least we're, because it'll take time to get there, but at least we're budgeting for where they think they're gonna go and what their goal is. And then you can come back and then you can run all the math based on if it's three years or five, we can run the math, which hopefully is. Is hopefully a little bit more than nine hundred and seventy-seven, uh, probably a little less than one point four. Uh, but at least that'll get us somewhere within the ballpark. And then if there's any upsets, because I agree with you, it's not good to be, um. Figuring, uh, your expenses and your operating expenses on interest that can change dramatically as we've seen in the past.
Yeah, and I think that's the kicker is we don't want to have items come up with a revenue number. And then we fund expenses with that revenue number, and then it goes back down to where it's twenty basis point. I mean, you know, again, and, and that takes time to get there. But those are just items that we have to get to. So I think that that's the kicker. And, and ultimately, even though the feds are not changing the interest rate today. I mean, over the last month, I think it dropped ten basis points in the pool. So I mean, that number's constantly fluctuating on what. People that are paid more than us to live in this stuff think. And so, you know, I mean, even though if we think it's going to be at two or a half, I mean, we may only be getting. Two, you know, because we are a conserver. I mean, there are specific parameters of, and bookends that we have to live within. So, but anyway.
I guess for me, I, I. I do agree that this should be the most conservative estimate of all of our revenue estimates. I'm a firm believer that I think we should put it close, all of our revenue estimates a lot closer to where. Put a little less. Conservative in them. Um, but this one would be the one I would, would say that needed the most conservative, but. Um. I, I do think this number is, uh, too conservative.
You're saying that the Reuters is telling you the Fed is trying to hit three point five? So this estimate is two percent, Jen? What I'm reading, is that correct?
No. Point two five per quarter is one percent. So go from five point two five down to four point two five. Is the twenty percent. That takes us down to one point nine. If you do fifty percent per quarter, and that's not, that's only including that year, and that's not including this year. Uh, which granted, you should be going to Q three because Q three covers Q four over the most part. So we're pretty close to that. Um, the one point four gets you a little closer to that. Because that's two points. And so if you take.
Maybe that's what we need to do. We need to hand out little sticky notes and then we all put our magic eight ball number on it. That we all think we're gonna have. And then we bring them forward and we average that out and use that number because that's kind of what it is. We all, all have our own little magic eight ball.
Add a dartboard too.
Yeah.
And that's going to be the answer we come to is whatever the average is of the numbers. That, that people feel like they can get behind. So I mean, that's.
And I think at the end of the day with investment interest, it's just a matter of where you're, because you're, if you're taking revenue. And, and that number becomes, because we're always using, I mean, it's not like we're not using. The increases that we're getting above, you know, as far as trying to get that number as closer, however, we're using that, which is funding other things. So we're, it's not like we're not using the investment interest. It's just funding. Things that we didn't think of when we're trying to make this huge guess or estimate.
It's all the supplementals that I would be a big fan of. Of changing the way the county works and doing a hell of a lot less than supplementals.
Being that we need to be closer because if we're off by five hundred thousand, we're talking about. Systematic changes to county government and knowing that our experiences are going up with all of the unfunded mandates at the state level. How would you feel, uh, Treasurer Gallagher on, uh, the forty percent reduction in interest earnings? Or would fifty percent be more accurate, do you think, to add in some conservative nature?
I, I, I will go look at it. I, I, I will, Jen and I can talk about a number. A one point nine?
One, and fifty percent would be one point.
One point one.
Point one.
Need new glasses.
What's, what's the forty percent?
Forty percent is one point four.
That's, that's where I'm at.
And remember, this is a budget and we can change the budget. And if it's. One, the new board that's sitting here can go, okay, we need to make some major changes because we can't bank on this money.
Right, but you're also banking on. We're reducing the entire thing today for our budget. They're doing it over the course of a year, so it's compounding. So it's not going to, the pain isn't going to be as great. Because even if they do take four quarters next year. That's a comp, not going to be compounded like today. We're doing the math in a compounded way. That was hard to explain, sorry.
Well, let Jen and I take a look at the one, let, let's, we'll, we'll, we'll do some, some looking at the numbers and we'll, I mean, these are the, the one, one to the one four. I mean, those are. Let us go back and kind of look at some of the parts and pieces and.
Yeah, I fully expect.
But I.
The next year to be about. Eight hundred, nine hundred grand.
I, I, I think we're headed in that.
But, but it, for next year, I think we're still conservative at the numbers that are being.
I guess, I guess I'm looking at this from a policy perspective. And the policy perspective is, is we know that interest earnings are going to go down based on what we're seeing and that interest earnings helped us the last year immensely. And this year, and that we know it's going down. And I want to build in a buffer for the people who are going to follow me. That are going to know. I don't want to be too optimistic and I don't want to be too conservative and make all their decisions for them, but I want to create that buffer for them.
I think that's fair, yeah.
Right, and I think it's kind of a long run thing too. It's like to take such a big leap right now. I think if we could spread it out. Based off of what will happen in the next three years.
I agree. I just come back to my, my point of being a conservative treasurer is that that money is funding expenses. That all you're doing is pushing the can or the decision down the road. And that's all you're doing is this is just putting a Band-Aid on it. That's, I'm, that's all I'm here to say. And as long as it's on the record, that's, I mean, this is your guys' budget for you guys to approve. I just give you my thoughts and we go from there, so.
That would be a complete shift of this county government to actually rip the Band-Aid off. And, and not have to do that anymore. And I don't see that happening, so.
But I will say though, that having been here for ten years, there is always something. So let's go back. I mean, there's always something that we don't think about. There's some sales tax increases. There's some. It, it is very interesting at how we look at all the pieces and all of them interchange with each other. And it seems like, like right now, I mean. Investment interest has been a great thing for us and it kind of came at a time where we kind of needed it. And who knows what the next thing is. And if. Some of the landfill things come to, you know, I mean, it is very interesting at how all the elements and, and it is a little bit of divert, maybe they do work independently of each other, which might benefit our taxpayers.
Well, and I agree with you on that shift that we need to do it. But ripping the Band-Aid off versus a transition.
Yeah, no, I got you.
I look forward to your numbers.
Yep, we'll look at them and see.
Yeah.
Okay, so the plan is just to confirm for, for me is to, for Treasurer Gallagher and I to meet and then come back to the board next Thursday. The.
Yeah, because I think we kind of have that we've, we've got some bookends of one, one to one, four is kind of what I've got, and we can kind of look through those and have.
I would prefer if, if of, at all possible, that we have the conversation on revenues on Tuesday afternoon if we can. And the reason is, is because when we come in Thursday and we're talking with department heads, I want the number in my head of how much we need to get to.
Okay.
That's fair. That, that makes sense. I like that idea.
And I would. On this one, I would be. Leaning to not set a hard and fast number. But if we could get to, yeah, we could do between one, one and one, four. We'd like to err on the side of one, one, but I can understand one, four. And not set a rock solid number so that we might have that as a tool at the end of the budget.
And I think that's what we'll come back with. It's just so that we have a little more comfort to say, okay, this is where I, I mean, we're looking at numbers and percentages, and I think this kind of gives us an idea. I mean, we threw a nine. Seventy-seven out there and so, and no, we knew it was conservative when we put it on there. I mean, that wasn't.
As I said, I have no problem with even penning in a one, one right now.
And we're gonna know a lot more.
Three hundred short at the end of the budget. I want to reassess this and go back to my original.
And we're gonna know a lot more even in thirty days. I mean, the feds could cut a half of fifty basis points. I mean, you know, I mean, we're all expecting twenty-five, you know, they do, they do their own thing.
So. Yeah, it's next week.
Yeah.
But that's what we always do. I mean, we always start with revenues, then we go into expenses, and then we usually finish with revenues. You pull the last levers in order to budget it or balance it.
As I said, on this one, I'm okay with not setting a hard and fast number. Um. Too early. Just have, let's have a range, have an idea. Um, set the hard and fast numbers.
I, I think right now we need to set the number so that we know where we're at, so that we can always keep that number in mind. This is how much we have to go, and then we can massage that at the end.
Tentative number, I'm okay.
Yeah, that's what our tentative is fine.
Okay. Any other comments on interest? Greg and I will come back on Tuesday then. Good.
No, my credit cards are paid off. I don't care about interest.
So, um. My summary, you know, just outlines that, look at that county, um, we've continued to a, adopt a conservative approach to budgeting. Um, underestimating the revenues of estimating, uh, estimating expenses to ensure a balanced budget. Um, the strategy has historically allowed the county to end the year with excess revenues, enabling the funding of some supplemental budgets. Um, and our budget requests and projects that maybe came up throughout the year. Uh, the, the detailed revenue projections and economic analysis provided in this report are intended to support and informed decision-making by the board. As you navigate the challenges and opportunities presented in the current economic climate. We've, we've gone through those top revenues, um, the major revenue sources that, that provide levers to really pull. Uh, Greg and I will come back on Tuesday after we discuss those interest earnings. You have the data for the property taxes in there as well as the sales tax?
Um, can we go back? Uh, motor vehicle gas tax is trending down and. We brought in. One million, our budget's two point three million, your year-to-date estimate's two point eight. Uh, and your twenty twenty-five estimated is two point zero six three. So are we thinking that motor vehicle gas is just going to remain constant? Or how did we get to that number? This is on the bid.
And let me get back there. Um, the twenty twenty-four year-end estimate. It, it comes from taking the first six months. And just multiplying by that, by two. It's, it's very basic. Um, I do have a comment in there. That's. That I believe that the gas tax increases during the summer months, but I don't have, I, I ran out of bandwidth to verify. Um, so rolling with the one percent reduction from twenty-two to. Um, so rolling with the one percent reduction from twenty-two to twenty.
Interesting theory, you think the gas tax increases in the summer months by, cuz there's more.
Or driving.
More people going on vacations?
I believe that was, I came that, came up with that from like, um, historical, but. I couldn't go back to verify that because I just ran out of bandwidth.
That would, that would be, I mean, yeah, we're playing in the minutia.
Yeah.
But I would think winter would be easier because gas costs half as much, so people will go more places on it.
And, and quite frankly, gas prices. Change with the wind when there's a national election, a presidential election, so.
I just, I, from what I was hearing from, um. Someone who had a, a gas distribution company, they, they were agreeing that, uh, we should be budgeting our gas taxes down. Um, for the foreseeable future.
Interesting, okay. Um, well, what was budgeted? Because road budget's at, um, they budgeted two point three million. So you can see right here, they budgeted, they have that two point three proposed, so a hundred thousand dollar increase from their. Um, twenty twenty-four budget.
Okay. Well. We don't have any answers cuz we didn't cut off of our five, but we've got some things.
Additionally, in your packet, you're gonna have non-business licensing improvements, that's where you're gonna find auditor's merit, um. Marriage licenses, um, building permit fees and, um. Permit fees for subject change out of, out of public health, um. And then street and curb permits in the road department, any, um, overweight penalties and whatnots.
So what about state entitlements went from one point five in twenty twenty-two to two point five in twenty twenty-three, and now we're over three million?
Uh, the detail of state entitlements is on the screen, also within your packet. That's gonna const, you know. There, there are so many different state entitlements here, marijuana enforcement taxes, um. A lot of court entitlements that equate to very little, um. Motor vehicle gas tax that is involved in, um, state entitlements. Oh, let's see. Vessel registrations, um, victim witness programs. Document present, preservation in the auditor's office, court cost reimbursements. Um, liquor excise taxes, liquor board profits, foundational services and, um.
So FPA foundational public health services is included in the?
Yes.
So that might be where that big increase is coming from.
It appears so, yeah, that, that's proposed at one, a little over one million versus six hundred less for the twenty twenty.
Okay, so that's where that would come from, and in motor vehicle gas tax has its own light at him, how could it be included in entitlements?
It falls under the base of, of entitlements.
When we're looking at it.
I separated it out for you because it is a major revenue source for road, um, but it is, it is included in entitlements as well.
And just to be clear, the motor vehicle gas tax is only for road, correct? We don't get a piece of it in our general?
Correct. On the sheet that you're looking at, just to clarify, though, because I was looking at an entirely different sheet than you were, Commissioner Anderson. I did reduce that line item by, um. By the motor vehicle gas tax, so you could just see the additional, I'll show you what I'm talking about here. So it is, that line is reducing the gas tax.
Sub, subtract gas tax out of it, okay. That's cuz I was looking at this going, why is it included if it's lining?
I was looking at the detail page.
All right. Do you have any other levers on the, the larger, um, that we might be able to pull? Uh, I'm thinking timber tax, uh, or timber receipts. Have we?
I guess on that one, to me, it would be, have we reached out? To those agencies to see what they forecast next year for harvest and, and whatnot, are we just going with historical guesswork?
Well, I, I believe what we've done is, uh, the DNR, we never budget in the DNR actually cutting anything. On county lands, and so it's just kind of like a woo-hoo. And we've been, at least as far as since I've been here since twenty fifteen, we've never budgeted that, those dollars in. But if they are planning to cut next year, that is something we could budget in that we could actually have a use for. Um, and it could be anywhere from two to three hundred thousand, depends on how many acres.
To me, over a year, it's worth the phone call to at least have an idea, because we might not budget it in. But we could easily, when we're looking at interest earnings, go, yeah, you know, let's go ahead and put the extra two hundred on there. Because we know we're probably gonna get some timber that we're not accounting for. Uh, it just helps make better educated decisions if we have an idea. Um, and maybe they don't know, and I would hate to put money in there because they think they're gonna do it and not get around to it, but.
It looks like Alisa had budgeted two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for timber tax in the general fund.
And it's going down, right?
And that's the same number for twenty twenty-four, but, um. We received a little bit over, we received two eighty-three in twenty twenty-three.
Okay.
Two forty-eight in twenty twenty-two and two twenty-eight and twenty-one.
What about, um, what we had for actual, um. From coming off of our land, well, in essence, our land. Where do we budget, where did that land in it?
Uh, what revenue are you talking about?
So, so we get seventy-five percent of the funds when they have a track or a portion on. The, um, state trust lands. Yeah, what, which one's that?
Which line is that?
I know they're doing some cutting on one of them.
Is it this one? State share non-timber, state forest land?
Uh, how much is that? Forty-seven, two hundred.
That's what we're.
Then that, that money gets put out to all the. The juniors twos. But you do that before we put it in here, right? Yeah, that's, that's your portion. That's our portion of it, yeah.
So we received in the first half of the year forty-seven thousand, in twenty-three, we received two hundred thousand. Um, and there was no budget entered for that for twenty-four or twenty-five.
Yeah, we don't, so that's, that's a woo-hoo, we don't budget for anything.
Correct.
What do we budget in, in twenty-five for the DNR pilt?
Nothing.
But yet we've got already twenty-one thousand, this year we had fourteen thousand last year. Um, and DNR usually pays their pilts, correct? Funds that's funded in the state budget. Right, right, so that's something we could add in there, twenty thousand dollars. How do you guys feel about that? Cuz DNR is actually good about funding their pills. Commissioner Christopher?
I don't have a problem with it, like I said, I, I understand why we haven't in the past, because all these little numbers, we just air. On the side of, let's put in zeros, we have money to pay for supplementals, but. To me, I want to get away from all these littles, add up to two million dollars, and then we have two million dollars of the supplementals. Um, so, yeah, I'll find them. Getting the, the conservative estimates a little closer to reality.
You still have to do a supplemental when you receive them, right, Jen?
No, I'm just saying we have a lot of money that we do for supplementals because. It seems like all the departments ask for a whole bunch of stuff during the year. That I, I would like to see them long-term ask for it during their budget. As opposed to mid-year.
Well, I just say that that's not usually how government works, things change throughout the year, and you can never know what grants you're gonna get. Or when the state decides to give you money that was, uh, overflow of something else, and you can find a way to pay for it. And I, I just firmly believe that we, we should always budget the things that we know we're gonna get, or we think we're. Gonna get based on past experience, and we budget just a little bit conservative on the, um, revenue side. And a little high on the expense side. But if we don't, if we put nothing in there, that's twenty thousand dollars that we have to cut from somewhere else in order to balance this budget.
As I said, as long as we're not budgeting for something that we may not get. As long as there's a historical trend that we're getting something, so we're not far off, I have no problem with filling in the box.
So, for clarification, you would like me to add in twenty thousand dollars worth of revenue to this DNR pilt line?
Yeah, I do, I, I think it's the right thing because DNR continued to, um, appropriate more ground. And so that's why that number continues to go up.
I don't have a problem with it.
Commissioner.
I think we're also to the point where. I remember back in the day, the nineties, when we had the tax relief fee. This is in essence telling the public, well, this is how much is going to the general fund. Or taxes that we didn't have to raise on you. Um, I don't know if we need to break it out like that anymore. I think there's other ways that we can make that statement.
That's been a conversation in the finance committee for at least a couple of years, um, on how. How we break out the landfill, uh, so that. It's a valid point, and.
I have a question for you, just kind of sidebar. Um, how do, how do the departments and offices? Figure out their budget that they submit to you? Um, for instance, I can think of one in my head that last year used. Four hundred thousand of landfill funds, but this year they're using one point two million of landfill fund. Do they just change the number and hope we say yes, or do they try to clear that through you, or?
Uh, that. There's only one, uh, one point two, and there was discussion with me because there have. They have, they don't have any other revenue source, so, um. That was.
They just throw it in there, so that's my point, whether they use, oh, we just need an extra X number for landfill or an extra X number from reserves, to me, it's either way. Um, they're both tomato, tomato, that, that money's already used, so, you know. Okay, so, okay.
Would you like to go through the landfill requests? It is in your packet.
Well, again, if they ask for it, just not in position to tell them, no.
Exactly.
Well, in the landfill requests are. I don't, we can, but I guess they're subject to whatever number we have. And if we only have seven point one, then we can't fulfill even the landfill requests that we did last year. Uh, but if we're actually at a higher number, then we might be able to fulfill some of those, so it. I don't, I mean, we can go through them, but I don't know if we can make a decision until we come up with a landfill number.
This is actually the first year that the landfill requests came in under, or relatively close to. My, my.
Oh, my god.
So, yeah.
What happened? I guess my question would be, what happened? To the people that say took half a million in landfill last year that all of a sudden don't need it this year?
Well, um, if you go to your landfill request page within your packets, also up here, if you could see that, um.
Your books are awesome, by the way, if they had page numbers, boy, even better.
I wish, I wish.
By the way, just to mention, uh, Steve Gilmore, we have a, Jen and I have a meeting with him at one o'clock today. To go over the twenty twenty-five, and then he said that.
You do? Yeah, I thought you were doing something else at one o'clock today.
Well, I am, but I'll step out for that for a few minutes, cuz Keith will be here with me, so.
Okay.
We can do both.
Thank you.
And then he said we talked then about Tuesday at one thirty, two o'clock, you have a very busy Tuesday or, and or Thursday morning if.
By the way, I'm appreciating this book as opposed to it all being kind of tucked in there.
I thought you would. And, and blown up in very large font.
Um, in, in, depending on how November goes, you will have to print an extra one of these next year, just so you know, I had it.
I know, I know.
Just like you did before, or you didn't.
Okay, landfill requests, um. So there are a couple that I highlighted that are, um. That I just called a landfill necessity, I, and it, it's only a necessity in accordance to current agreements by the board. So, of course, those board, the board could change those agreements at any point in time, that is totally up to you, um, so those. Those would be, um, to fund the LT GO bond to pay for this building at one point two six. Um, the solid waste funding for that contract. Um, there's ten thousand of it that goes to public health for a contract and.
Which one is that, you know?
I knew you were gonna ask me, I was trying to brush over it, um.
I know you were.
Is it peaceful living?
That's what I thought, okay, I, I will, I will go with that because that's the answer I thought, too.
I think it is, anyway, um.
Which is domestic abuse, just for those.
Emergency Management's Fund, uh, sixteen thousand. Uh, cumulative reserve for emergency reserves, um, we have a policy in place to put two hundred fifty thousand dollars a year there. And then the county fair of twenty-five thousand. Now, you'll see orange highlighted, um, those were, those are highlighted just, just for board discussion. And, um, one of those being Fund One Thirty-five, if we wanted to fund, um, that communications and nine one one fund. Of, with landfill rather than reserves, that's up to the board, this is a placeholder for now, um. Economic Development receives. Landfill, um, dollars as well, and then. Victim witness has received landfill dollars, um, you know, that used, that has gone up a little bit, but it's not. Going up in a trend to match CPI, and so I highlighted that. With discussion of potentially increasing that more in order to match CPI. Because the revenue that goes into that fund is so minimal from the state and the grant, um. So I would like to talk to the board about increasing that, so we're not pulling from reserves or the general fund in other areas. Um, to just keep up with CPI. Um, then.
I, I agree with that assessment.
Okay.
Um, I don't know where they stand, but I agree with that assessment. And the other thing that caught. My eye in the budget was, I know we haven't discussed, um, colas. But we also did not factor a cola into our defense attorneys. Um, which I can guarantee you will need to be done. Um, so we might want to do that sooner rather than later, in my opinion.
Uh, Commissioner Anderson. Or, um, victim witness. Yes?
Mr. Anderson?
Yeah, I'm just, I mean, we did it last year, and there was a reason for it.
Thank you. And then, um. And then, uh, road and GIS, um, and the road landfill has just been continued discussion since, um. I've been in this position and, um, Commissioner Anderson and Commissioner Christopher have been in their positions. So that used to be a million dollar. So that used to be a million dollars of landfill, it was taken back to five hundred thousand. It was then taken back to two hundred and twenty five thousand in order to balance the budget last in twenty four. Um, Road is requesting two hundred thousand for twenty five. And then G I S has can, has continued to increase.
Right, oh, since we're talking G I S, I did get a request from Ms. Tracy at Lyle. That is requesting the board buys new G I S software so they can fix her address problem. So I'm bringing it up for you for discussion. Problem with everything, but she's requesting we buy new G I S software so we can fix her address. And I told her I would bring it up during the budget, so I am a man of my word and I am bringing it up during the budget. I'm just saying.
Jen, it's fifty two five, a request from Rhodes, or is that proposed?
That is their proposed budget, so that's essentially their request for it, and that's for G I S fund, not Road.
Okay.
At some point during this budget cycle, are you going to go over? Potential road fund diversion for public safety? Uh, or what that could look like, or what that could be, or any part of that whole apparati? As in educational purposes only? Let you plug your, would you like me to get down and do it for you? You're in a dress, ma'am. I can tell you the Advil does not alleviate pain very well.
Do we need to, if I want a break to go to my office for a second, do we need recess for any reason? Could we recess for five minutes?
I would, I would recommend that we don't, so that others of us that are here can still have basic.
Okay, but I can leave and you can still talk.
Just walk out whenever you want. I can't do anything as a sole commissioner anyway, so, but we still have discussions about.
To answer your question. Within the comments of the regular, let me go there. This large packet, which is the last forty one pages of that binder right there. If you go to the property tax.
Those pages are numbered, by the way.
They are numbered because they, I was able to pull those ones straight from Smart Sheets.
But that's, you said, if you go to the property tax, then I'm like, give me the number.
Yeah, let me, let me go find that for you.
I can cheat, I'm gonna cheat, damn it.
So within the comments of, of that section. I provided all of that information and those resources for the board to be able to look those up and see what that would mean.
You have a page number.
I'm, I'm still looking, let me get through this, I don't wanna.
That's it, I'm looking at things that say Road, but.
If you were in the actual smart sheet.
I could swear I saw it when you sent the email packet out.
Page thirty three. And, um, I provided information, quick summaries for road levy shift and road levy diversions. As, as well as a hyperlink to those sections within the revenue guide.
Right, but I guess what I was looking for was. What would it mean? What's the dollar amount?
I did not, I did not do that.
Um, what is the mathematical change?
Dan, I, 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 I think.
That's what I was looking for.
General, some counties, I'm far from an expert, some counties do the diversion, it's because the road fund has a surplus. And they, and they divert the surplus or the, the additional, if, if you divert funds and there's not a surplus, then you're actually shifting services, so.
Well, yes, you would be paving one less road. Uh, in buying cops with it, essentially.
I will tell you that. If those options were to be explored, if those were to be done. Um, then those monies could only be spent for patrol, I believe. Services and those dollars would have to be reported as such by that department to the crab board.
Right, I get that, I'm just, I, I'm looking for the dollar amount, because technically, if you divert and say can divert a million. That would pay for patrol, it wouldn't necessarily bump the sheriff budget up a million, because now you can put in a million less of general fund. And you can use the general fund to do something else with, I'm just saying, whatever number that is. Would be the nice number to have to finish my education on the matter. Not that I would pull any said trigger. But, um, I think it's something that this board and the next board actually needs to be educated on. Uh, what, if there, if we did do a road tax diversion for public safety. How much money could we get from the road fund to pay for public safety? In other words, deputies on the street, that then we didn't have to use general fund dollars for. And I know there's a percentage of the fund, blah, 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 but I don't know if that's three hundred grand or three million.
Can I just read a quick summary from M R S C about road levies? There, the broad levy shift. Road levy shifts and road levy diversions are two different mechanisms for increasing current expense revenues while decreasing road revenues. Each of these options have very important differences. Um, and Crab has additional information. Road levy shifts and diversions must be authorized by the county legislative body each year no later than November thirty. Which, if we're going with the alternative date of December third, we need to, you know, consider that. A road levy shift is literally the shifting of taxing authority from the road fund to the current expense. Using a road levy, levy shift, the county can exceed the normal maximum current expense levy rate. Of one eighty per a thousand A V, while the county's road levy rate is reduced. Since the road levy is collected only from those taxpayers in the unincorporated areas of the county. While the county current expense levy is paid by all county residents. This results in a net property tax increase within the incorporated areas. And a net property tax decrease within unincorporated areas. Road levy shifts are budget based rather than rate based. In other words, the county determines how much money it wants to shift from the road levy to the current expense levy based on the budgeted amounts. The assessor's office then calculates the new levy rates for the current expense and road levies. The new levy rates resulting from the road levy shift cannot exceed two dollars, two point four seven five per a thousand A V, and the total combined levy rate for the current expense fund and the road fund cannot exceed four dollars and five cents per thousand A V.
Okay, so that would be the math is that.
Hi.
Hi.
And, and don't get all worked up, I have no intention of doing this, it's just an education.
But I think you need to hear the ramifications.
Oh, I'm aware of the ramifications.
I, I don't think people are, I really don't. Levy shifts, first of all, there's only one county that does levy shifts. Levy shifts are extremely dangerous, because let me tell you what happens if it's not, if it is not attended to right. If you have to create a separate fund, and then that fund, everything is auditable by the state auditor. It's on the state auditor's page, one mistake and they pull the county's gas tax money. So you know what that does to Road? It basically shuts Road down completely. But even the diversion, which some counties do, but counties divert, when, when I was in Thurston County, we diverted. Reason we, reason the county diverted was so Road could have sheriff patrol people when they needed them. To enforce the right of way and things like that. Because they still have to work under the sheriff's department. But what does that mean for Click Attack County? Okay, Click Attack County, the road department's in the same situation as the general fund, if not worse. We are, and we'll talk more about this in the budget, we have cut because we've lost the million dollars, which would have gone to maintenance. We have gone from doing forty miles back in two thousand. Uh, or twenty twenty of chip seal to seven miles of chip seal. You know what that means? That means we're not, we're not maintaining our infrastructure. So if you take another million, so we no longer have a capital budget. We no longer have, we no longer do chip seal, so what does that leave us with? The two main big things we have left is we cut snow removal and we cut grading. That's where we stand, and we still may be doing that unless something happens. We've already started some of that with the grading and people have heard complaints. But if you're talking any type of a shift or diversion or any more cut. We have to cut services and where we start is we quit plowing O nines. Now I've heard people say, well, let's look at. O nine roads are local access roads, sorry, I'm a little worked up, but.
Well, I told you it did not be worked up.
No, it's a big deal, when, when you guys start talking about that, I got a whole staff up there that will go find other jobs.
But it's just, like I told you, it's just education, I have no intentions. Yeah, and if people don't trust me for my word, that's their own fault, I guess, but I never went back on it, so they shouldn't trust it.
I'm just, I'm just saying, not to argue with you, Commissioner Christopher, the bottom line is this, I left the job because they, they gave me a pink slip. Basically, and said that when the Unime Initiative came out, worked for the state, they said your job could be cut. As soon as somebody tells you that, if you're smart, you go find another job. And we won't have people to plow roads, that's the ramifications, if we lose those people, I can't get them back. That's what I'm trying to tell you. The impact will be huge, again, people standing in line at the auditor's office, they're gonna be upset if they're waiting. I'm just using you for example, because you're sitting.
Totally good.
But how, how mad do you think they're gonna be if they can't get there because they can't get out?
So I think education does have two sides to it, it's education to know what it is and education to know what the.
But I think you guys needed to know the ramifications.
Right, and for me, I think there's two sides to that ramification. Number one, what it does to your department and your services. And number two, when that money is moved, it is no longer managed in your accounts, it's managed in another elective's budget. Which we can't.
But you have no control over.
Right.
And there is a difference between a diversion and a shift.
Even, even a diversion though still makes it so Crab comes in and they evaluate. Yeah, I'm not gonna throw, but if you've already have trouble keeping a budget, one dollar.
And it's gone.
And it's gone, they come in, they just grab our, they grab our grant fund first, and they go after the tax task. Then the last resort, they make the general fund pay the road back with interest. That's, that goes far reaching, but small counties don't do diversions. If you look, the big counties do, and I'll give you an example, Yakima does diversion of about five hundred and twenty thousand dollars. That is for law enforcement that Road can use, out of about a twenty million dollar budget.
Does that work? How does law enforcement that Road can use? What do you call them when you're doing construction on a road?
Yes.
And saying, hey, I want an officer stationed here because cars are going too fast.
Exactly, we have.
Say, okay, and, and so, and then if that officer's there for eight hours, they're deducting that eight hours from the five hundred grand they took.
Well, no, it's kind of a little different, so what they do is, is they, if they divert, like in Thurston, then we diverted, I don't know what it was. But it gave us so many officers, and we're literally paying for those officers.
Right, that's the question I have, is what guarantee, if we even did that, would I have, that when you called and asked for an officer, you'd get one?
You have no, that depends on your relationship with the sheriff, but, but on the other hand, see, there is an M O U. A memorandum of understanding between Road and the Sheriff's Department that says, when we call, we get a, we get an officer. If we don't get an officer, then you all lost the money back.
Okay, there you go.
So there is that.
But there is some hold accountable that.
There is, okay, the problem is, is.
See, this is education.
We do our own enforcement, I don't need extra enforcement, because we don't have that issue. And bigger counties, you do have that issue, you need help getting people off, that's a lot of reason they divert. I mean, there's one exception to that rule, and that's Pierce County. But, you know, they divert like sixteen million, but they probably have two hundred fifty or four hundred million dollar budget. Because Pierce County's Pierce County.
Mr. Van Cleve?
And, and I think Jeff touches on an important point that always exists during budget. And can be a little more sensitive when budgets are a little tighter, and then in the climate we're in, it's even worse, is any discussion. Uh, and we have to have them, we have to have them in public, the employees are very sensitive to what does that mean for me? What does that mean for my family? What does that mean for, for my job? And, and, uh, it shouldn't preclude the conversations, I don't think Jeff's saying that, it's just any conversation over the next month and a half. Uh, as we go through departments and offices. Pe- people are just hypersensitive, uh, more so than usual, and it's just good reminder.
Well, I, I understand that, but I don't want to scare that conversation into a back room behind a closed door either. Uh, the public has the right to know what's going on in their government, so I, I, while I am sensitive to the employees. I, yes, I work for the employees, but I work for the people. So my first order of business is transparency, knowledge, and, and then hopefully the employees will. Make, make rational decisions based on actual information and not.
And my comments weren't directed at you, Commissioner, they were just in general.
In general, yeah, I agree with that too, in general, we have to be careful. So just to be totally clear for me, in a situation like this, there's an idea that there's a fund that could be shifted to help a struggling department. But that would not just go into a general fund and be used wherever, it would be dedicated to assist the road department.
Well, it doesn't have to, they can use it for traffic enforcement.
Okay.
But it has to be traffic, where I think, I don't remember the exact county.
Something to do with the road.
It got tripped up years ago, is, is when they came to audit them. They didn't, and I'm not gonna stake the county, they didn't use the money there, they used it for criminal investigation. We are now, we spent some of their money just recently, because they lost their grants.
Well, and that's where this conversation is good and is educational, because the last one and a half minutes of this conversation was very enlightening. So.
I, I just wanna make.
Have the conversation, Jeff.
I know, no, and I get that, I get that, I just wanna make sure that the board is aware, because it's your decision, I have no say.
We don't get there until we get educated.
Right, what the ramifications of this is. If, I'm just gonna use the million dollars, this is not a shot at you, the million dollars means we only plow sevens and eights. That's how.
Not plow my road, no way.
A, a, yeah, but a lot of people here that are sitting here that I know.
Plowed my road for about two years, just so you know.
Heather has something.
Well, I was just gonna say that the diversion. That, both the, the shift and the diversion can be used for general government purposes. However, the diversion, if it's not used for traffic law enforcement, likely compromises your ability to get funding under the rural arterial program, so there, there are certainly considerations. The downstream, what happens if you don't, and you can only use it in the unincorporated, uh, areas.
Right, so again, keep in mind, that would be really, really well looked at. The state auditors who zero in on that, and there's a bunch of other things that go with this.
The state auditors do ask every year.
Yes.
We do. Zeroing in and budgetary impact and budgetary management of said funds. Are uh, a definite no, from me anyway, that is the, uh. That would be a problem. So I can already see that being a problem, so you should feel much safer walking out of the room than you did walking into the room. But even when you walked into the room, I told you, I just wanted to know.
Well, you should have, I would have been more than happy.
I didn't have before.
I would have been happy to tell you because.
You all need to know it, I may not be here in January. You all need to know it. I may not be here in January.
I know, but it would have been, you know, again, I would have been more than happy to tell you because I've dealt with this for many, many years. I would just say any diversion gives Jen a, a massive amount of work because it has to be somebody watching that fund very closely.
It better be watching it very close.
And again, it takes one charge, just one. And we lose our wrap funding, which is millions of dollars of gas tax money.
All right, love you, Jeff. Get up, go away.
Just telling you the facts.
Tell all your employees, calm down. Don't get us hypers, Jeff.
If I may. Um.
Yeah, take your bodyguard with you.
To all directors, electeds and county staff that's, that's listening and. Please be patient with what you hear in the workshops. We, it's my job, it's Jeff's job, it's, it's other directors' jobs to educate the board. The board needs to have these discussions and these brainstorming sessions, so until there's a definitive. Answer and direction to please be patient. It's, it's really just education and brainstorming at this point in time. And, and if there's any, any questions whatsoever, uh, I think H R is a great. Yes, and, and emotion too, I, but we have to get through it. And, and we have to have the conversations and unfortunately, we can only have them in public. So.
Unfortunately, no, fortunately, we get to have them in public.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So we look like a bickering family.
Uh, yes, yes, it, it's.
It's, it's a fortunate thing. I was calling back to four years ago when I wasn't allowed in the budget meeting, so.
Well, and, and I'm not saying it's a bad thing.
And for some reason, my phone didn't work.
I'm not saying that having them in public is a bad thing by any means. It just amplifies emotions and, and misinterpretations.
That it would be.
Um, and so I asked, please be patient, and if you have any questions on any decisions that were made. Can always email me, call me, Rob, um, Casey and H R, and, and I know the board is always willing to answer any questions individually as well.
Did you not disagree with any of that? Joy to the world.
That was an interesting fifteen minutes. Thank you, Mr. Christopher.
Be the hornet's nest.
Oh, I can't leave.
And, and I, I.
No, I think the education is needed. I'm sorry.
And, and it is, and, um, you know, if something comes up. Directors, rest assured, just like I just did, I text Pam and Jeff, you know, if you're not listening, please come down and help educate.
Thank you.
So you're the cause.
They were listening. They were already. But rest assured, I will, I will send you a message.
I'll reserve my comments.
Right. Any other, is there anything in the landfill request that?
Jen has some.
Can I, can I just finish one more thing too, because Lori had stepped out for a second, um. On the pages that are numbered in your packet, page thirty-three talks, um, I put a comment in there. Um, of the road levy shifts just for educational purchase, um, purposes for you. Um, and the diversions, it has the R C Ws as well as that blue box I was talking about.
Okay.
Um, and if you click on that blue box in the email from the P D F. It will send you to the, um, M R S C revenue guide that explains in detail each one of those.
I, I was, um, intrigued like your thing that you could take up to. I thought it was a set, I, you know, this is how educated we've been on the matter in the last three years when I. Because it's one of those, don't talk about it. That it's an actual up to versus a set dollar amount per thousand. Um, so to me, the education is valid.
Well, I think it's important to, to understand what options are available to you, and that's, that's why I. I put everything I possibly could from that revenue guide into this document for you.
And just for general purposes, the, the whole levy process is very convoluted and M R S C does do a pretty good job. Kind of breaking it down and explaining that, I mean, it's kind of like new math. Back and forth and we pull a lever here and it undoes a string over here and so.
Uh, anything else in the, the revenue requests for landfill that kind of raised a red flag or?
Um, nothing raised a red flag for me, um, though I only highlighted those other than the, that I felt that we needed to increase, um. For victim witness, um, I only highlighted the ones that I did. Um, because of, they've been topics of conversation in the past or they were increased requests. That's, that's all.
Who, you know, off topic or offhand, who? Has historically gotten landfill funds that, uh, didn't ask for them this year?
Of course.
Uh.
Or reduced them greatly? I mean, it's not technically pertinent. It's just, again, a knowledge thing. Because it's kind of like Greg saying earlier, just, just because one of them may have got it every year for twenty years, but doesn't want it this year, doesn't mean they're not gonna be back next year.
Dan, while she's looking for that, we have a question. So on the victims. The, uh, defense attorneys, I can't think of the term.
Oh, it's.
Public defenders. So is that a two-year contract, a one-year contract, or they get a?
I believe, we'll have to look at it, but I believe it's a two-year contract, but C P I is in there.
It's in there, okay. Um, here it is. Thank you.
Guys, get it all figured out.
Yep.
You missed out.
You missed the whole hornet's nest.
What were we talking about?
Yeah.
I, I asked some educational questions on the road tax diversion. And, uh, and they brought pitchforks and chainsaws.
Jeff Hunter entered the room.
Didn't take very long, huh?
No, but it was, it was actually pretty educational. It was, I, I learned, uh, a number of things I didn't know before over three years.
That, that, that the, usually when you do the revenue diversion, the cops work for the road department.
Well, there is that, but there's way more. You'll have to go back and watch the video. I don't want to talk about it.
Yeah.
Uh, you don't want him running down the stairs again, getting it.
Oh, I, it won't be hemorrhonic.
Stopping there. Okay, moving on.
Now, I'm gonna have to go back. You can go back, Jeff.
Take your blood pressure medication.
Were you in the middle of something for Mr. Christopher? Where were?
Um, I, yes, I, I'm pulling up the historical landfill.
Okay.
Um.
Oh, for extras that got it that weren't in the.
No, I don't ha- I haven't put, um, twenty twenty-five's requests yet in. Because those aren't solidified, so, um, this is just historically. Uh, where, where we've spent landfill dollars.
And yeah, and I just don't see anything glaringly missing.
And I see you highlighted economic development, but what did you want to talk about with that?
Um, not that I wanted to talk about, I just, um, open for discussion, and I can't remember off the top of my head. Whether it's a necessity or not for the new contract, I think is why I highlighted it.
Okay. Cause I see their actual was way lower than the forty-one they keep putting in the budget.
I believe, um, they have.
It dips there.
And I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk about this without going back and looking, um, but I believe their fund balance is, is healthy.
Okay.
So, um. Is it a necessity? Is it something, you know, required? So in twenty-four, we were able to reduce those numbers because they didn't need it. And, and I'm not sure if it was economic development, natural resources, um. But, you know, we just reduced it to balance their budget and that was it.
Rather than when we're having these discussions on the revenue side and each one of these departments running in here to try to defend their. Whatever, what I would like to, how I would like to approach this is so if we see something like this. We can just kind of put a question mark next to it and bring it up when we get into that department's budget.
Okay, and, and that was the point of me just checking the, the potential B O C C's, um, discussion and highlighting those. Um, it was to help assist the, the board, um. Review and.
Right, and that's why my question was, do you see anything out of place?
No.
Any, I mean, I see the great increase of, uh, funds to communications, but again, I don't even want to get into that conversation. So we get into the communication budget. This is just to put little question marks for me when I do get into that.
Anything else you wanted to see with the historical landfill?
Do you have the same breakdown sheet for, um, people that ask for reserves?
No, I do not. And I don't believe anybody has asked for reserve. Nothing was glaring to me when I was going through there.
I can swear there was one that caught my eye, but I'd have to go back to the other book, that I'm like, why did they ask for that? Reserves and not landfill funds.
If we're three or five in the hole. Somebody has to have built something in there that it's gotta be showing it's coming out of reserves. Because otherwise it would be showing that we're asking for more landfill than we've budgeted, so where's that coming from?
There's a, there, there's at least one and I'll, I'll have to go back through it.
But would they specifically ask for reserves? Or they just ask for funds and you would?
It's some deserves, and it was a good chunk.
A transfer? It would be a transfer line item.
I would hate to speak, but yes. I had tabs, I can probably find it easier.
Um, did we talk, well, I was gone, did you guys talk about REIT?
No, we did not.
I took the hard one road. I left you the easy one REIT. I don't mind having hard decisions.
Mine.
Um. Dan, look for the deaths over there.
Oh, I know what it is. Okay, so here's your transfers. Um. And it is the. Transfer into, um, the auditor's non-departmental for. Kianta upgrade.
Okay.
That was the only one?
Uh.
Are we gonna get an update on how that's coming along? Sometime soon. I would love an update. Thank you. Thank you.
Economic development, and that's point oh nine dollars to cover their employees. For two hundred and fifteen.
That might have been it.
Uh, yeah, that's, that appears to be.
Okay.
That, yeah, the, the one going to Heather's, um, fund is nine hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars. That's substantial and rightfully so to question that, but it is for the Kianta upgrade that's been dedicated for multiple years now.
And it should be noted, that's just where it was decided to park the money. It's not.
That's one in.
We're starting, starting, no.
He loves the word slash one. Okay, that answers that.
Perfect.
Next. Jake, did you want to talk about REIT? Did you have?
Yeah, so, um, twenty twenty-three actuals, three ninety-six.
You have a page number or you?
There's a page number.
Well, there is at the end, so I was hoping you were at the end.
Nope.
No, it's the one that says twenty twenty-five prelim real estate.
You're just. It's after interest earnings.
Keep going back, Jim. It's, they're, okay, you should be right.
Oh, it was on page away, you mean? No.
No. Oh. Mine's in a different. Okay.
Adobe, and, and I, I apologize for that. Adobe was not liking this large of a file. And kept like not merging some of the documents for me, so I was not able to go ahead and add stuff because it was shutting down on me.
Here, I thought you were just going with, uh, my eyes are going bad with the size of the font on these pages. So, uh, how, how confident are we on the four fifty-five for next year? For the REIT? And, and what was our methodology on that?
Um. Oh, well, I can tell you that I, I personally do not and had, did not provide, um, assistance with budgeting these, this. These get budgeted, um. Out of this specific departments, um. So, which in this case would be, would be road, so I, I'm uncertain of their methodology, but I would imagine that it was just trying to. Increase a little bit, but not, not too much for the reason of, um. Within the executive summary, I do highlight that, um, mortgage rates are. Looking to stay the same, so, um, they're not anticipating much change, um, in home sales. That's, that's what M R S C had.
Really?
Guided, yeah.
It's not good.
At least one local title company is anticipating an uptick in transactions if interest rates drop.
Yeah.
Uh, again, that's a crystal ball. I have no idea, um.
From what you're reading, and that's the thing that I don't understand, from what you're reading is. The Fed could change interest rates, which lower interest rates. But yet the mortgage companies wouldn't follow the Fed and lower.
That's what, that's what some economist, um, experts had predicted within the M R S C, um, guide.
I would imagine they would be, you know, six months behind or something, but I, that just is weird to me.
I thought I had read that too. Was that with, just within specific areas that they were predicting that forecast? Like I was thinking it was Seattle area, they weren't.
Usually they stick to like the, the major metropolitan areas. Um, they're not gonna go into the details of these tiny, small rural counties, um. So.
So the other idea is, is maybe road needed three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a project and they put three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a project, or not road, but public works. Oh no, it is under road.
It's under public, it's under capital, three oh three.
Right.
But, uh, Dan and I talked about too, that maybe after he asked the question that it might be, and I ask a question, it might be good to wait and flag these, but wait till the department's here with us.
Yeah. No, I just was trying to figure out how we got to the numbers we got to, and if, if it was a, this is what we need, or if it was a, this is what we're seeing.
I apologize. I did not, I did not touch base because there was, it's, it's a low number. It's dedicated to a specific, um. Fund only, um, can only be used for capital projects, so I didn't check in on it.
The other half we lost for communications, right?
Because we, the board had chose to increase sales tax, um, that meant we couldn't get.
Two of them, and now we just get this one.
Correct, so, because we, we took that, we used to get the second half in lieu of sales tax for REIT that could be used in, um. Non-restrictive ways, but because we took the sales tax, we no longer could take that other, that second half.
So the, one of the, this comes up because of the discussions at the state level on revenues, and there was a lot of conversation on REIT. And, and where REIT could go. And some of that was being able to put REIT on more of a, um, a graduated rate. So anything on low houses, it's lower, anything on bigger homes, it's, or, or bigger projects, it's more. And I'd made the point, you know, we took a major hit when we took the second half on the sales tax. But all the other counties that are, that are fully planning counties, they get both REITs. They, they get both sections of that where we don't because we're a partially planning county. And I said, well, you know, that was a, that was a stick and a carrot for a long time, but. We're pretty much not to that point. You're not seeing counties go fully planning now, and we have the same cost. And this is, what, what does capital improvement have to do with, with whether or not you're fully planning or not? This doesn't make sense. We could use, uh, uh, rather than changing it so we'd get a little bit more money, say twenty, go from twenty-five cents to thirty cents. It'd be a lot bigger if we could just take the, you know, get that second half of the REIT back like we used to have. Like all the other counties are taking, because all those other counties get it. And so that's, but, you know, if, if it's three hundred and fifty thousand dollars and.
I just think there's so few of us that don't get it. I don't know that it's a, a push for all those that do. They don't, they don't care. They get their own, they're, they're worried about their own stuff.
But if it, if it doesn't affect them and we're just making it equal, so it's not a do.
Right, I just don't think they're gonna want to use their political capital.
I just want to make sure, I just want to check in, make sure that everybody understands what Commissioner Anderson is talking about, about REIT one, REIT two. And fully planning county, meaning the G M A county. Everybody understands what those are. Okay, perfect. That's all. I just want to check in because I have, I have notes for you if you didn't.
Yep, well, I guess I could have had you read it.
No, it's fine. No, keep going. I just wanted to verify that everybody. No, it's fine. No, keep going. I just wanted to verify that everybody.
So that that was one of them that I was like, look, you know, changing that that formula could actually hurt us if. The half in the the east side of the county has sales under five hundred thousand. It will and in anything from. From five hundred thousand to one point five million, which is the vast majority of our sales, it wouldn't change. So were you spending political capital to to potentially get a. Uh, especially for the east side counties, uh, a potential reduction where if you just gave us access to the second half of REIT. And you made it as something that's a lever that we could pull because we haven't talked about all the other levels levers that we actually can pull that we currently haven't pulled. Um, that all the other counties, nearly all the other counties have pulled all the levers now, like Spokane and and you know, the big counties. They've pulled all the levers, taken all their taxes, and there's still millions, millions, millions of dollars in the hole where we haven't even started pulling those levers because we've had the landfill.
So is that like public safety levy and those kind of things?
Criminal justice.
Criminal justice.
There's.
Point one tax here, point one tax here, you know, point two, five here, sales tax.
Nine one, nine one one. Yes.
Yep.
There's a few. I had a few public safety options available if the board chose to. And I've highlighted those in the report. If you would, if you want to discuss them, we can travel down that path.
And the other one um, that came up yesterday, it was the, we've still got one meeting of the the green energy X uh. Tax shift, but there were a bunch of people who were trying to put other stuff in there. And I said, well, if you guys are gonna start putting. Um, housing and all this other stuff in in this thing, then we need to have the conversation about the local. Sales tax exemption because that by itself would be bigger than all the rest of this stuff for us locally. Um, as we move forward, whether it's, you know, a green energy or this and. Uh, Paul Jill pushed back pretty hard on that again, saying, well, I don't think we want to include that. I said, well, if you want to talk about the housing and all this other stuff in here as part of this. You know, if if we're doing scope creep, this has to be in part of the scope creep. And so what it actually did is it ended up pulling all that stuff out of there. So we're only talking of. About the the tax shift, which I think is gonna. Well, I think what we probably want to do though is we're not gonna get. WAC support on that. Uh, but I think it would be a good investment on our own lobbyists that, you know, we pay you this much money every year. This is the one thing that's gonna have the biggest impact on us. Uh, is the state giving away our sales tax.
Well, I I do, as we go through the budget, want to have a discussion on. Uh, lobbyists. Because at least in my time sitting here. I absolutely do not believe we've had a good bang for the buck out of our lobbyists. So to me, it's either. Remove that lobbyist fee. Or this board needs to have standalone projects. That that is what that lodged lobbyist does. Here is your goal for the year, and we want a progress report and and that's how this board needs to handle it. Versus writing a check for X number of dollars for the year, and then every meeting saying, no, we really don't have anything for you. If you don't have anything, don't hire them. Hire them on years you have something. But that's that's a discussion when we get to that budget line item. Because we spend a a bit of money on that one.
And. I would say uh, I agree one hundred percent that you should hire lobbyists to do the the projects that you want them to do. I would say though that uh, paying three different lobbyists uh, with the other organization. It's actually, we're really affordable and we're probably getting about what we're paying for.
On the.
On our current lobbyists, we paid not very much compared to what the Portahood River pays and the cities pay and everybody else.
Find out that it is going up. Cost yet, so.
It's not in the budget. So I just wanted to give that, you know, if we're talking about revenues, you know, these are revenues.
I'm I'm all for having that talk when we get to that.
And these other ones you're talking about all have a. One to two year, right? I mean, some have to be voted on, some have to.
Some of them we can implement. Some of them have to be voted on. Some of them have to go, you know. And but I think what what if we're looking at, you know, we just went through our big revenue levers. And I think if if I average it out, I think we're down to about three point five from five. Three point five still a long ways to go. And what would be nice is to have a list of all of those other levers. And and their timelines for incorporation so that when we're. Yeah, so to have a copy of that.
Is voter required? That's not voter required.
And we've have done that every year.
And and if you go back to your um, PDF that he sent you an email again. The blue box you'll see around each item. That's how Adobe inserts a hyperlink. Um, so that'll hyperlink it you to MRC Revenue Guide on that page.
For that.
For that uh, for that topic.
And I guess, but that's that's part of the conversation, you know, if if we're talking about, we wouldn't take the one percent general increase or potentially. Um, does that take all these other ones off the table as well? Um, and where are we at on that? I it's how do we want to balance this thing? And. Um, whether we have those conversations and how in depth we want to have those conversations, I think. Uh, we need to have those conversations much sooner rather than later. Uh, because that's and and I would definitely like to make sure that uh, those people who are running for my position are inside that conversation. Uh, because what I don't want to do is is leave the next board with a mess that they can't. Especially when you're coming in and you're green and there's a lot of problems. Um. I don't want to leave people in the situation I think Dan and I were in.
Well, wouldn't it make sense then to have those conversations like Thursday while we're in the revenue side of the discussion? Or is that a whole different day, different?
No, I thi- I think it's it's good to continue to have them during the during, because this is all part of the budget. This is how we're gonna get there. And you know, it affects all the county residents. I mean, we're up to twenty-two, so people thought probably thought we were starting at nine, not eight. But still, the these are, these are wide sweeping changes of culture in the county from where the 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 board has been in the past and how we want to get there.
Well, I guess for me, I'm I'm the same on this as I am the one percent. I don't want to go into it with, hey, we can get all this extra money here. The only time I'm gonna go to the people and say, I raised your taxes is when I can tell them that. I cut every piece of fluff in your budget. I've cut every service, every everything that we could possibly do. And still can't get there, so we had to do this. I'm not gonna do it on the front side. Um, I'm not gonna agree to raising taxes if the board is gonna continue to fund. People in projects that don't technically need to be there. Um, so if you want to look at revenues first, I will. I'm fine with that. I'll just be quiet over here while you do it.
I have just kind of a sightseer question. I don't want anybody to run to the room or anything, but. One percent. Versus a public safety levy. What does that do to the people? What's that look like for your pocketbook? Between those two.
One percent in the general fund is about fifty thousand dollars, but public or the road fund gets the same smidge more. So say fifty grand, fifty-five grand in the general fund in sixty grand in the road fund. So combined total of. Um, let's say a hundred and ten thousand divided by twenty-five thousand people. Um, you're five bucks a personish.
I think what it works out to.
But you also have to look at all the juniors because all the juniors are gonna take it too. So.
Levy is up to fifty cents and it's for six years, so it really depends on. The that whole pulling of and pushing in in the levy process and where. And you can't just say it's gonna make. This dollar happen. There's there's lots of factors.
But the the in the answer, what I what I was told is the one percent on a per parcel basis is about twenty dollars per parcel. So you figure that's twenty dollars a parcel. Um, or general and twenty dollars a parcel for road. So it's forty dollars per parcel is another way to think of it.
It's a higher number than I have in my head, but. It's not that far out, but you have to figure when all the junior taxing districts are already doing it. Um, and the county goes up forty and the hospital went up. And the EMS district went up and the cemetery district went up, the fire department went up. That's where you start getting people's compounded year over year tax increases. Um, hitting the hundreds of dollar mark. Which that's at one percent. Now you go to three percent. Now instead of going up two hundred and fifty bucks a year, it's going up seven hundred and fifty bucks a year. And that's seven fifty is gonna compound next year. And the next year and the next year. And that's where I have the humongous problem of three percent because not that. I I have full confidence in myself that if I didn't need the three percent, I wouldn't ask for the three percent. I have zero confidence in all the junior taxing districts not taking their full three percent. And that is based on other counties. You have counties that don't take the one percent. But their juniors all still take three. So I'm looking at it. My actions have consequences to the people. Because the juniors can do something. Uh, that I disagree with. But they can, so they do.
What else?
Go ahead, Ken.
Before that conversation started, um. I I had asked if you wanted to start with all the options available to you and you said. You had said yes, I thought at that moment. So and then that conversation kind of continued on. So if you want to go back to doing that, we can start it. At um, page eighteen.
Which is what? The new tax options?
Um, the options of any type of um, revenue source, sales tax, levies, property tax, whatever all of those are. I did put those in in the report for you. Um, and we could just start at the beginning.
I think the nine one one and Greg might know this. I think the nine one one has been talked about. I think Jeff King did some work on it five years ago. Uh, wasn't a lot of money, cause three hundred thousand, I think. But I mean, that's one that's been kicked around by. Multiple versions of previous boards.
But yeah, but if I remember that one correctly, we take. What we can get without a voter levy now, and I believe. Uh, we would need to double check that, but I believe I had message from Jeff. That the last one percent that he or whatever it is that he thought we could get, we can't without levy. So there would need to be some. There would need to be some clarification on whether that's not a voter approved.
I did highlight in the report that they are voter approved. So if we could start from the beginning again.
Hey, Jen, take over. Here, shut all the rest of us up.
So we're. Jeff King, we're gonna start at not with nine one one. I promise. We'll we'll get to you. I promise. Um. So the first one on the list would be the mental health and chemical dependency sales tax. That's one tenth of a percent of sales tax. Revenues that are restricted to the use of mental health and drug treatment um, purposes. This may be imposed by the. By any county and does not require voter approval. Um, the use of this revenue. Uh, must be used for expenses related to operations to deliver or delivery of chemical dependency or mental health treatment programs and services defined. In statute, including but not limited to therapeutic court programs, treatment services, case management, transportation, housing. That are all components of treatment program or services.
Question. What it point one percent, what dollar number is that? And do we currently have programs and services that are offering that now that we can use this money to subsidize? Or would that be stepping up new programs?
So I if I would highlight those questions for adult probation and um, behavioral health. I did verify with um, Director Quinn that. Um, these dollars can be used in the courts as well. And it is, yes, that can be.
Cause that would be the next question on that one is how much money is it? And is this something that we can already? We're already doing that we can use the funding on, or is this something that we have to make a new? Project and or transfer the money to log app or some other ABC organization?
Well, if we can use them in court services, then that would be the general fund and that would be. Um, that would assist the general.
Right, but we need to know how much money that is.
Correct.
What are they currently using and?
I will definitely add that to the list for treasure gathering.
No, it's not. Do you just put it on his list?
Put it on the list. Okay.
I mean, you may not need to. I may be the only one that asked the question, so.
The next one would be page twenty. Um. Oh. We've already done the optional second half sales tax percent, so never mind, move on.
Yeah, that was old information that was sitting on there saying Clickdak County doesn't take it, right?
Yeah, they've updated it. It's like it's not in the actual. It's like an addendum to it.
So now you're covering what?
Let's have a conversation on the marijuana excise tax.
Um, before that is the criminal justice distributions. Did you want to talk about that?
Uh, we'll page you right.
Oh, actually. That that is more of what MRSC projects um. For counties to receive. It's page twenty-one. So. Marijuana excise tax. And the criminal justice distributions.
So do we currently get zero on the excise tax on marijuana, or do we actually get some of it based on the formula?
I believe we get zero because we are not an open county. If we wanted to open our borders. And not just have our sixteen and a half. Registered pot growers. Uh, then we would get the tax, but as long as we just have sixteen and a half and are not opening our borders, we don't get any. Somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't believe I am.
So I thought the retail share thirty percent, uh, one point five percent of the total distribution after deduction goes to cities and counties where the retailers are actually located. The amount is prorated based on the share of total revenues generated and taxes collected. So that's one piece of it. And then there's a per capita share, which is worth a lot more. That goes to cities and counties that do not prohibit cannabis citing. And so this was a big a big conversation, a topic of conversation at the county for revenues. Uh, and it's a big number, um, rather than getting, you know. Three and a half percent. They were talking about the county should get ten percent. The city should get ten percent because it's a huge number and the counties are the ones that actually in cities deal with it as an issue.
Right, but if we don't qualify, what's the matter if it's three percent or ten?
Doesn't say on the retail that we don't.
Well, the other question is.
I mean, I I did ask this question before and I didn't get an answer because we were busy with general budgeting, but. Somebody would need to show me that we actually get marijuana tax money. Because currently I believe we get zero.
Uh, we get, we get a portion.
I don't know exactly, but it's horrible. We get a portion every month from this, or I shouldn't say every month, but at least every quarter. We get an amount through the state permit.
Or it's.
Excise tax or marijuana tax.
Want to check and see if that's what the.
It's in the commissioner's budget.
Okay.
Um, non-departmental. Um, it's actually highlighted for your discussion.
It's the revenue from the stores.
And it's the marijuana enforce it. Our bar's number labels it marijuana enforcement.
And how much is it?
We are. Um. Under thirty thousand.
A year?
Yes.
They said, I I I agree with Jake. If we opened our borders. Uh, and remove the prohibition currently in place, we could potentially get much more. I think that's the argument. Being made. I could be wrong.
I'm saying it needs a discussion. I'm not making an argument for or against. I'm just saying that if we get thirty thousand for one point five percent. On the thirty percent. And then there's a per capita share seventy percent, three and a half of the total percent distribution after deductions uh, for the per capita share. That could be quite a lot of money. Um, and what you could do is is you could. Not prohibit it, but you could have high standards for where you put it and whether or not it is. Um, and that might be something. And if the county or the state moves, WAC moves forward with go pushing that to ten percent, that could be a really large number.
So in early discussions, the answer would be we need to know what the number would be currently. I would think to even open the discussion. I would think to even open the discussion, got to know what you're doing before you do it.
Well, that's why we're having the discussion. To see if we want to direct staff to look at it.
Just to check in, um, the interview panels here waiting and we need to trans. Transition the room at some point, and if you want to talk about what you want to do Thursday, it's it's eleven, so.
Thought we had till eleven forty five for some reason.
What's with uh Budget Bunny anyway? What's your Budget Bunny? I just noticed it.
Budget Bunny hangs out with the men.
I know, and I just noticed it. Is that is that what it is? Is Budget Bunny?
It's a stare down contest.
Hot old the Budget Bunny?
Well, why didn't you give it to Jeff earlier?
I was going to say, you need to give me, you need to give me many of those because I heard a lot of feelings over the budget.
And the title is marijuana excise tax.
Comes from the store, probably.
I mean, you have another ten or fifteen minutes because lunch.
You think it's like thirty grand for the year or something?
But what she's got so far is probably right.
What number did you hear?
It's under thirty thousand. It's just shy of it.
It was sixty six hundred in. Um, June eighty one hundred in March, so thirty thousand.
As I said, I mean, to me, I need to know what number he's talking about before I would even entertain the conversation. But.
Uh, I don't think we have time to hit the landfill gas, so.
When are we starting? Start at noon.
You probably have till. Um, eleven fifteen, we have to transition the room and then um we have to discuss the process and lunch will be delivered and then. The first interview is right at noon and we have to get Zoom set up for that.
All right, we have till eleven fifteen.
We we probably need to talk about what we're working on next week. What, or do you want to start?
We've given a lot of direction to staff to come back with information.
I guess my next question is our Tuesdays are uh weak. Our afternoons are short. Um, and I have no problem with doing two hours of budget on an afternoon on a Tuesday to move this thing along too, so. Just topic of conversation since we tend to go to lunch and recess same time.
Personally, I would like to finish revenues, get the information that that. Because we didn't set a lot of these. We know that we're going to move that number to a tentative number. Um, and I'd like to do that Tuesday so that on Thursday we can start the discussions with. Uh whichever departments uh want to uh.
Yeah.
Come in first on the expense side.
So is the plan that you guys, you want to hear from all the departments? And some of them just maybe short conversations and others aren't?
I guess what I've heard today is is that uh in order to have the tough conversation about. Uh pulling other revenues. Um, we need to go through this thing and remove all of the fluff. That I thought we've been removing for the last three years every year. And make sure that that we're on a place that we can have the hard conversations. And knowing that it's an election cycle and there's a lot of politics involved, but I think um. That's what we need to do and we need to go through it um and have those hard conversations.
Elise, did you have something? We have a uh public hearing this next scheduled for this next Tuesday at one o'clock. It could be controversial.
Oh, yeah.
Rezone. Um, I have, we have rescheduled uh emergency management. To do the update on that. They also with the with the knowledge that he could be bumped. Because we didn't have a forum on Tuesday.
Yeah, because of that hearing, I'm fine with a budget on Tuesday.
But uh and then also with Steve Gilmore, the possibility of having him come before, so I I mean, I'll leave it up to you. But I just want to make you guys aware.
So the hearing, we're just taking testimony. And I don't expect that to take more than two hours of testimony. That would be three. We could still have the conversation about the revenues after that. At least have the information presented in overview format from staff so that we can. Come with our ideas on Thursday to make decisions rather than to spend thirty minutes having a discussion about it.
So then we should tell Steve three. Now, I told him one thirty, which we'll discuss on our call, but it's more likely three. That you would have time for him to call in or Republic to call in on Tuesday.
Yeah, and then if it goes early, we can work on budget and then we can hit him at three or whatever.
Do you have to fit Jeff King in somewhere? I can do that. I can.
Okay.
Or what we could do with Jeff is Jeff could send us his uh amazing. Multiple pages of information and if we have any questions, we could call on him.
Okay, it is included in this next week's agenda. Do you want me to pull that out for you or do you want to just?
Leave leave it in the agenda and you know, usually it comes with an update and so with a week he might have more updates that. He wants to send to us, but um I think the budget and we need to move on the budget more than we need to hear for an update from emergency management. Unless there's something very hot and off the iron. But if there's nothing that that he needs us to make a decision on or policy choice, then let's work on the budget because we're already behind.
Okay.
So I work with my teammates.
Your show.
Well, that's what I'm asking.
That work for you?
Whatever.
So no departments on Thursday, if you're going to. Start off with the revenue. I mean, I'm trying to figure out what you want.
We can do the revenue Tuesday afternoon at three.
So you do want to book departments on Thursday?
Yeah, and I guess.
Who would I? Who? Who would you like to start with?
Is there a way that we could agree upon some of the departments? We could just greenlight, like you said, the courts and just have a list of people that. We know that they know we're not going to expect them in unless something goes horribly wrong and then we have to call them.
No, I do have some departments who have already um. Requested a specific date. And I have departments who. Who do have blackout dates, so. So I, whatever direction you tell me, I can work with those and and see what we have, because typically we'd already have all of that light out.
First, and I think a couple of those have scheduled for the twenty sixth is what I've heard.
Later in the year.
Yeah, so later, so that would be road. Who else? It's twenty six. Is that EMS? Who was it?
Um, emergency management has the twenty six, so those are longer conversations. Do you want to try to fit in the easy ones?
I guess.
I don't care.
So my pers- my perspective is let them work. Pick their dates and see who wants to go next week.
Okay.
But and I may be the only one that's not clear, so them is everybody? Let everybody pick, but if if a department or office says. We don't.
If they don't want to go and we don't have them, we want to talk to you, then.
So at this point, you don't have anybody yet you want to talk to. I'm just trying to figure out who so we can start getting people penciled.
Provide some guidance for the board. Okay, um. I would advise maybe just start with people who receive general purpose dollars. Those who have landfill requests, start with those. Um, or any other general purpose dollars that you really have to like. Think about and make decisions over and then go from there.
Work for you?
Whatever. I mean, at least that one makes logical sense.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh.
Always.
Just throw it. Go ahead.
Can I add two potential levers to revenue discussions? RCW twenty six oh four one sixty and twenty six twelve two twenty. Which allow me to add fees to the marriage license. For the purposes of uh family services and family court. I don't know whether it applies. To, I sent that. And information to several departments in um. October of twenty twenty three to ask them if they were interested in. Looking into whether or not they qualify for those fees. So.
Sounds like Heather just um offered to go first on Thursday's workshop.
Sure. I'm here anyway.
Yeah.
So Jen, you have that list of who has those requests? If you could send them an invitation.
I I will reach out to everybody and I have, I know a only two. Requested to me specifically wanting to speak with the board. And then I do have one, a couple that have some blackout dates. Um, but I know Commissioners Zoller, you had said that people had requested to you. I don't have that list, so if you could send me that list, then I can work off of those and go from there.
I guess I would, I would just say. That I I would hope. That. Uh, the courts are busy. They have their own stuff and they're usually not an issue. Uh, so I would make a recommendation that we kind of don't include the courts in these discussions. Unless we're looking at it and have an issue and then we can schedule them at a later date. But I wouldn't want them to have to come in here and put time in their day when it's it it's not an issue.
I would like.
Unless they already want to be here.
I believe what you're saying is how I. I would feel the. The judges typically cannot just drop everything to come in. Their time is valuable. I mean, everybody's time is valuable, but theirs are restricted. The the judge's budgets are very, very minimal and um. Now. So I I would agree, they probably would not be the first on the list. We would have to give them some advance notice to be able to come in.
Right, and that's all I'm asking for is that we have a discussion about all the judges' budgets before we decide to have any of them come forward.
Now, I I would throw out there that if we are going to talk about revenues that could potentially fund things in their departments that we bring them into those conversations.
I think that's appropriate.
Yes, I I have.
Staff has a plan.
Because I I think there's, it's just like her latest little funding idea that there could potentially be money for this other thing over here. You sent that email out when? Okay. Did they get back to you on that? That's my point. Could we use that money on something else? Oh, probably. But how motivated are they? Because currently they just get our money, so it's easier that way. We're going to have to motivate them. If we're going to do something, so. Self motivation in in our government is not really.
I will move forward, meet with um Greg and go over some numbers, bring back Tuesday afternoon. Late afternoon is what I'm understanding, yes. And. Right, and um and then I will reach out to departments and and start putting together workshop schedules.
True.
For Thursday. Thank you. Give me your binder and I will, I will put tabs in your binder for you.
On Thursday and coming back for expenditures, are we talking whole budgets with departments starting on Thursday?
I've, my understanding was whole budget workshops.
Hoping for whole budgets.
Okay, because we're going to wrap up the revenue piece.
On Tuesday. There, there's a lot of options we still haven't covered, so I will try to. To be proactive and guess what you might. Um, want to be interested in. So I, of course, we'll start with. Um, public safety and um. Those that don't require voter approval. Is that fair?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I definitely want numbers on the E nine one one sales tax, point two percent, how much that would be.
That would be top of the list, yes.
And the nine one one telephone tax. Since we adjusted our landfill request in order to balance the budget.
Wrap it up.
Yes. Absolutely.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Jen. And Heather and Greg.
We need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Uh, I believe we need a motion to recess because we're going to reopen in the executive session.
Is it closed session or executive session?
No, I think it's executive.
Special negotiations.
The other is contract negotiation.
Back to bargaining sessions, yeah. Uh, yeah, it's it's a. One ten slash G, the qualifications of an applicant.
So, oh. I will entertain a motion, I guess.
Are we going directly in that so we can have conversations while we eat? Or are we not having any conversations while we eat and going into executive after? That's what I would say, so rather than recess, let's just go straight to executive.
Well, with the interviews, those are executive session too, right?
Yeah, but we'll be talking through them, so.
Okay.
We're scheduled till five, but I would um, I would, just because you can't come out early. I would, I would suggest we do it till two and then just every hour extend or something.
What what time is our last interview? So why don't we say four o'clock and then we can figure it out then? Madam. So we don't need to recess, we just need to enter an executive session, which you can do, so we need no recess.
So we'll be closing out the workshop for the Clickidat County Commissioners and entering into executive session under. RCW forty two thirty one ten G. Uh, to evaluate the qualifications of an applicant for public employment or to review the performance or. We're going to be. Evaluating the applications for qualifications for public employment and we will.
It be till four.
Till four, and we may extend if necessary.
And for everybody online, we won't be turning Zoom back on once we come. So thank you for a great uh morning and we will talk to you all later.